Good afternoon. Welcome to the Wednesday, April 10, 2024 special meeting or workshop of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, good afternoon, board members.
Serna?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
I mean, Hume.
I'm human and I'm here.
You flatter him. Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, April 14 at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff or assistants or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First item, please.
This would be your public comments relating to matters not on the posted agenda, and we do not have any public comments at this time.
Okay, just to ensure there anyone in the public in the audience that would like to comment. All right, next item.
Okay, item two is the General Plan Annual Report for calendar year 2023.
Did you raise that up?
I did, yeah. Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Jacob Dahl, and I'm an associate planner with Planning and Environmental Review. Before we dive into the Housing and Infill Workshop, which I'm pretty sure everyone is actually here for today, we're going to be covering the General Plan Annual Report for calendar year 2023. So a little bit of background, every year, we, at the beginning of the year, we compile available data we have here at the county and consult with other county agencies to prepare an annual progress report on our implementation of the general plan. We use this to inform county priorities moving forward, as well as submit it to the states for their own reporting processes. Every year, we report on three elements. Annually, we report on the housing element, the environmental justice, or EJ, element, and then another element that rotates. So this year, we focused on the energy element. The full report and progress on the implementation measures in the general plan are included in the meeting packet, and during this presentation, I'm going to be giving a brief summary and going over some highlights from the report. One last bit of housekeeping before we really dive in. Understandably, the annual report heavily focuses on housing production and progress on our housing element. I'm going to be covering on these items briefly, but don't want to go into too much detail as we're going to be having a much more robust discussion on housing during the housing workshop coming up next. So with that, we can go ahead and dive in, starting with the environmental justice element. This element was adopted initially in 2019, and staff have continued our implementation work on that effort through our executive working group. Attachment four of your packets is the EJ report card, which lists how each of these EJ measures are being implemented, which there are 58 in total. Our primary role here at Planning is to track EJ implementation throughout the county and raise interdepartmental awareness of its programs, make sure each county agency is kind of taking their day-to-day activities through that EJ lens, as we emphasize that here more at the county. This year, we continued our implementation tracking and our stakeholder outreach, including our annual stakeholder meeting, which you can view a summary of the comments we received during that meeting in the EJ report card. Moving on to the Climate Action Plan, work last year primarily concerned with continuing to revise the cap based on board direction received back in 2022. We also incorporated guidance from the California Air Resources Board, draft 2022 scoping plan update, and we wanted to ensure the cap is responsive to AB 1279, which sets a target for statewide carbon neutrality by 2045. We did hit a key milestone in the cap last year, and that was publishing the Notice of Preparation, or NOP, for the subsequent EIR that was published in December last year. Work's going to continue on the cap as we continue to redevelop our forecasts and our targets, and we're going to be revising greenhouse gas reduction measures, again, to incorporate that guidance from the state. But we are anticipating this to go to the board for a public review and adoption in the fall this year. Moving on now to the housing element, we have actually four affordable housing projects that were submitted and are currently being processed. That's Terracina at Wildhawk, the Mission Avenue Apartments, East and West, and the Beech Hill Apartments. And I believe the Beech Hill Apartments actually received entitlement approval late last year. I'm going to be covering the progress we've made on our regional housing needs allocation on the next slide, but just as a reminder, regional housing needs allocation, or RENA, is the number of units that we're required to plan for here at the county through our housing element and our vacant land inventory. And we are currently in year three of cycle six of our housing element. RENA is determined through HCD, the California State Department of Housing and Community Development, and the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, or SAECOG. And as a last reminder, there's no statutory requirement to build the housing in our RENA allocation, just to make sure we plan for it and we have enough vacant land to accommodate it. And then last year, we wanted to highlight the work we've done on the rezone program. This is being funded through SB 2, which is a state law that passed a few years ago that allocated funding to local agencies to streamline housing production. And so through the rezone, we're hoping to further meet our RENA goals by rezoning vacant and underutilized parcels to higher densities, so we can accommodate lower and moderate income housing. In this past year on the rezone, we were able to refine and finalize our candidate rezone list, continued our outreach and engagement with the property owners for those candidate sites. We issued the NOP in late 2023, and actually, just this past week, we published the draft subsequent EIR, which we are very, very happy about. So we are currently on track to meet our state mandated deadline of fall 2024. So this table here shows the number of residential units that were permitted in each year of the current housing element cycle. Again, these RENA numbers are determined by HCD and SAECOG, and we're required to plan for this allocation. There is not a state requirement for us to build it. I do want to take, make a note here, the county itself does not build this housing. We do require and depend on our partnerships with SHRA and the private development community to help meet these housing needs. That doesn't mean that we're absent from this process. So we've been making a lot of strides here at the county in improving our development processes internally, and we're constantly exploring new ways to incentivize housing and try and help boost these numbers up. And a lot of that's going to be the discussion of the Housing and Infill Workshop coming up next on the agenda.
Hang on, Jacob.
Yes.
So you said these are the RENA numbers as allocated from the state. These aren't the number of permits that we have permitted?
So the cycle six, we've seen the column, cycle six, RENA, those are the numbers the state has determined we need to build.
Between 21 and 29, yeah.
And years one, two, and three are the number of units that we've issued building permits for at the county.
Got it. Thank you. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. So as it relates to kind of the ongoing accounting related to RENA, do we assume or does the state tell us that for each year in a cycle, so in this case, 2021 through 2029, and each year during a cycle that we don't hit our targets in terms of actual construction? And I understand RENA doesn't mandate the county construct. We're not in the business of constructing the units, but planning for the units at appropriate densities. But each year that we may miss the target, do we assume or does the state tell us that gets compounded? In other words, it's kind of a running balance that gets, that's additive?
I don't believe so. I believe at each housing element, at the beginning of each housing element cycle, the state and SAECOG, they issue a new, kind of a new set of RENA numbers, and we have to accommodate for those in our housing element and our vacant land inventory. And so that's kind of like each eight-year cycle, we're going to update our general plan in our housing element to make sure we have, we can show the state we have enough vacant land where we could feasibly, these units can be built. It's not so much if they see we're not building it, they're going to go and try and adjust for that later, just when we hit the next housing element cycle. If they increase our RENA numbers, we're going to have to adjust our vacant land inventory.
Let me ask a question a little different way than.
Okay.
Just from a practical standpoint, let's say there's, we're not even looking at kind of the formal process, but if we know that we have a need of over 19,000 units at these four different income categories, and let's say we only hit half of it within the cycle period, 2021 through 2029, wouldn't it practically make sense that we should assume that that gets added to the kind of the next cycle in terms of kind of just the compounded need?
Sure. I think I understand your question, yeah. I don't think the state then comes in in the next housing element cycle and whatever we didn't hit adds it on to the next tally. I think they'd redevelop a new forecast and say, this is where you are now, and in nine years from now, this is where you need to be. So practically speaking, yes, in terms of, I guess, I guess there's a difference in what we need to do with our housing element to meet statutory requirements, which is just to show the land, versus practically what we need to do here at the county, so.
Yeah, and the reason I ask the question or present my impression of kind of overall housing need is, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that the county of Sacramento has reached its historical permit issuance numbers, not that that's a mandate, not that that's anything, but a look back at history in several years compared to what we used to produce. And so I think it's important for us to kind of digest what the RENA numbers tell us, but to also understand that we're already behind the eight ball, way behind the eight ball, as far as I'm concerned.
Sure.
And not, I'm not talking just about market rate, I'm talking about all of these income categories, in fact, more than these income categories, including extremely low. And so I think that's important to keep in mind when we, you know, when we go through the mental gymnastics of how do we, how do we meet and check all the boxes of RENA, let's not lose sight of the fact that that's just, that's kind of a required accounting that we need to do, but this is only telling us part of the story.
Certainly. I think there's kind of two, two different actions when it comes to RENA. And there's a statutory requirement where we just need to show, hey, we have this vacant land, we can accommodate it. And then there's the practical, which again, where we look at these numbers and we're not on track. And so that's where the state is not going to particularly care, the specific policies we take to try and get us on track, but we use these to inform us in where we need to go as the county. And so I think, like you say, keeping these in mind, especially as we go to our housing workshop next, I think these kind of paint the picture of the necessity of changing our processes a lot to try and boost the production. So I think if, that's where we can use these numbers more as where we need to go, rather than, you know, more just kind of, yeah, like you said, checking a box.
No, and I appreciate that important reminder, but again, you know, I think just for the record, at least from this supervisor's impression, knowing what I know about our history and how much we haven't produced, and all the consequences of having a regional housing shortage, certainly a housing shortage in Sacramento County, and looking at the effect it's had on the market and the fact that we've had extraordinary price and rent inflation for several years now. And for those that may, you know, say, wait, hold on, county, you got all this, these planned areas for residential purposes, I think it's just really critical that we not, again, lose sight of the fact that for each year, we don't kind of hit what we should be producing, not just planning, not just zoning, but producing, rolls into the next year, because population growth doesn't stop just because, you know, population growth pressures don't stop just because we're not producing enough. And, you know, especially given the relationship we have with the Bay Area and the fact that we have, continue to have extraordinary migration from that part of the state, makes it all that much more important that we, you know, keep our thumb on the pulse of just kind of overall practical housing need.
Certainly. I think staff are completely in agreement with you on that. It's important to know. Thank you.
Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Kennedy, since, or Chairman, sorry. Flo got me started. He's human. Thank you, Chair and Hume. Two things, since we're stopped on this issue. One, kind of to the line of questioning here, as we go through the next process with the state, the primary thing they're looking for is not that we're meeting those production numbers, but that we have, you know, enough identified sites for those types of units, and that we are not getting ourselves out of a greater imbalance relative to, say, above moderate versus very low. Is that correct, that they're looking more that we're sort of addressing all needs equally?
Correct, correct. The state wants to see that we do have that balance between the different income categories, and that's primarily the goal of the rezone program, is that there was actually a recent change in state law that changed how sites can be counted as moderate versus low and low, very low income. So the purpose of the rezone program is to increase that density so we can have a bigger inventory of sites that meet that low and very low, as, because we went through our housing element process a couple of years ago, we came in under that threshold we needed to meet. And so by increasing that, the available land inventory for those sites will be balancing out our vacant land capacity and kind of meeting those state requirements.
Great, and I think the point is well made, that these numbers are rolling and cumulative, and more importantly, that this is the regional, and so this is our fair share of what all a local government agency should be producing. And so then, if I can just opine for a quick moment, these numbers are absolutely anemic. I mean, when you think about all of the developable land currently in the pipeline within the county that we're producing 2,000 units over a course of three years, that's just kind of embarrassing, I think, so, thank you.
Good to you.
Thank you. So on this next slide here, we have a graphic showing the status of each implementation measure for the seven elements that we've covered so far. There's only six shown here on the graphic, because last year, we covered the Delta Protection Element, which has implementable policies, but doesn't have any actual implementation measures, so it's just not represented here. So far, for the elements that we reviewed, we've completed 38% of the implementation measures, and 62% remain incomplete, and that includes some that have made some progress, no progress, or are no longer applicable. So as I mentioned, this year, we focused on the energy element, which has 33 implementation measures. A few highlights that we wanted to include on the energy element was the expansion and development of van pooling and car pooling programs, and the completion of the 2022 Active Transportation Plan, which includes various bikeway and pedestrian master plans. We wanted to take this opportunity as well to highlight some of the issues that staff have found in implementing the general plan and in tracking the general plan, and we've been able to kind of put these into three main buckets. The first is awareness. As the board is well aware, we've had significant staff turnover, especially since the COVID-19 pandemic, and departments have found it increasingly hard to keep track of how they're making progress on these implementation measures. As many staff, their work is becoming somewhat disconnected from the general plan, as they're not aware of the measures and how it's impacting their day-to-day work. Next is the age of the general plan. The last comprehensive update of the general plan was approved in 2011, but some of the policies there were carried over all the way back from 1993. And so a lot of these implementation measures have fallen out of date, they're no longer, should no longer be county priorities, and so they're just not being implemented out of necessity. This was especially evident as we reviewed the energy element this year. One prime example is the notable lack of mentioning EV chargers. As the state and federal government continues to push and incentivize electric vehicles, the energy element is notably silent on it, on our need to meet the demand for electric vehicle chargers and make sure that our grid can withstand that increased strain on the grid that the EV chargers are going to have, and it's just notably absent from the element. Last is the size of the general plan. So the general plan has 686 implementation measures, which is quite simply, we found just is too many for most county agencies to make sure they have a well-thought-out and thorough program to make sure the implementation measure is implemented the way it was intended. We want to highlight these issues because staff is going to be giving our scoping process and working on the draft work plan for the general plan update, hopefully by the end of this year, if not, then early next year. And one of the lenses we're going to be viewing that work through is implementation, making sure that the general plan is implementable, it's clear, it's concise, it's easy to use, and it's easy to communicate, not only to county agencies, but the public as well, so the general plan's mission, objectives, and goals can be continually tracked, and everyone is kind of on the same page. Next, I want to move to the general plan's identified growth strategies. So the general plan actually identifies four growth strategies, that is to highlight vacant and underutilized properties and to revitalize commercial corridors. We've kind of lumped the two of those together into the infill bucket that you see on the slide. We have our approved growth areas, which are approved master and specific plans that have been made it through entitlements, but just are either currently being built out or have yet to begin construction, and then pending master plans, which are currently in review with planning. We have a few projects that we're working on that meet the infill strategy, and that, as I mentioned earlier, the county rezone project, all of the parcels in this project are either on vacant or underutilized properties or are located within commercial corridors. We have the Stockton Boulevard and Northwatt Avenue plan updates, so we're looking to update the special planning area ordinances for these two corridors to increase residential density and to incentivize housing and infill development. And then lastly, here, we have the infill program, which is going to be making recommendations for policy and procedural changes to incentivize infill development, which will be a subject of discussion in the workshop coming up next. For our approved growth areas, beginning in 2018, planning began tracking the development capacity, and for these three vineyard areas, and so you can see on the slide there, the remaining unit capacity that those plans have. And we're going to have a slide coming up next that's going to be showing all of the full capacity for all the plans. We wanted to highlight the work that was done in North Vineyard in this past year, particularly pertaining to transportation requirements. Planning coordinated with the Department of Transportation and County Engineering to make modifications to roadway improvement triggers that have been hampering development in that plan area. The board also adopted a major amendment, and this is going to be a mouthful, so bear with me, the North Vineyard Station specific plan to implement the updated North Vineyard Station Transportation Mitigation Strategy. Okay, I got that all out. Both of these have been well-received by the developer community, and staff are confident that this is going to relieve a significant financial burden that developers have been sharing with us in that region, and we're hoping that's really going to start speeding up housing production in North Vineyard. So I mentioned this slide is showing the full, the planned capacity for our approved growth areas. Again, these aren't permits issued or remaining units to be built, it's just the full planned out capacity, and so these numbers haven't changed from last year's report. And then lastly, here, we have the pending master plans. So these are master plans that are currently in review with our applications processing team here at Planning, and we like to update this slide every year to show the update in our projected number of units from these master plans, as those plans are refined over time. Most notably, we were able to add antelope acres to this list in 2023. All right, last topic we wanted to discuss with you today is the Planning's proposed work program for 2024. So we're going to be continuing our work on the environmental justice element through our executive working group and supporting EJ-oriented projects. We're also hoping to expand our community outreach efforts related to environmental justice, hoping to meet with, meet more personally with a lot of the community groups in those EJ communities. We already discussed the Climate Action Plan, but we'll be continuing to work on this year, refining the cap and preparing for a final public review and adoption later this year. We also have the Certified Local Government, or CLG, program. Planning will be working with the Office of Historic Preservation and other agencies to have the county designated as a CLG. This would strengthen local decision-making regarding historic places and cultural and historic resources. Through this effort, we're also hoping to explore sequoist streamlining benefits by having a county, countywide historic resources management plan. This is also identified as an implementation measure in the conservation element. We do want to note that additional budget and resources will be required for this program, and we're looking forward to discussing that more during the upcoming budget process. Next, we have our local early action planning, or LEAP, grant-funded projects. That includes our pre-approved ADU construction plans, which are currently in plan check review with the Building Department, but we're hoping to have those complete and online and ready for folks to start using by the end of the year. We also have our by right supportive housing ordinance, which will be a zoning code amendment package to the planning commission, oh, sorry, it will be a zoning code amendment package to accommodate supportive and transitional housing. So that went to the planning commission just last month, and it's going to be presented to the board here in May. And then lastly, again, work will continue on the infill program, which we're going to be discussing more next. Like I said, we're hoping to have that approved in fall of this year. For housing element implementation, work's going to continue on the rezone program. I mentioned the draft subsequent EIR was published just this last week. It's going to be presented to the planning commission in May, and then to the board in the fall. We're also going to be talking more about this project during the upcoming budget discussions as meeting that statutory deadline in the fall is currently the highest priority for staff. We're also hoping to kick off the Affordable Housing Ordinance Evaluation and Update effort this year. This is going to include an evaluation of the effectiveness of the current ordinance, an exploration of an inclusionary component to the ordinance, which would be a required affordability component for new housing projects, and an economic feasibility study to support any recommendations or alternatives proposed. Once those items are complete, we're going to be bringing that to the board for a workshop. We're going to present recommendations, alternatives, and we're hoping to have that workshop in 2025. Last few programs here. So we have the, again, the Stockton Boulevard and Northwatt Avenue update, corridor plan updates. Stockton Boulevard, we're hoping to have a draft of the, draft of the SBA update by the summer or fall. Northwatt is looking to really kick off in earnest here in the next couple of months, as they're just finishing up the RFP process, looking for a consultant to help us out with that effort. Wanted to note here for Northwatt, this project is reliant on Green Means Go funding through the state, and the state, that's one of the grant funding programs that the state's considering cutting through their budget process as well. We've been actively lobbying the state with SAECOG and our legislative analyst team to maintain this funding for Northwatt, but it's uncertain at the moment. We do view Northwatt as a vital corridor for infill development here in the county, and so we're pushing hard for that funding. We're slated here more in June, and we can update the board on that once we kind of hear final word from the state. One other item we want to shout out for Stockton and Northwatt was, we're working with DOT on parallel transportation projects on those corridors, so that way our land use plans and our transportation plans can work in tandem to work better for those communities. And then lastly, here, we have the general plan update draft work plan. So as I mentioned earlier, we're looking to start the scoping and preparing the draft work plan as we really kick off our general plan update process, and that'll either be by the end of this year or early 2025. So with all of that, we do have action here for the board to take, and staff recommend that you receive and file the 2023 annual report, direct staff to submit the 2023 annual report to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research and the California Department of Housing and Community Development, and to direct staff to proceed with the implementation of the general plan, including projects outlined in the work program of the 2023 annual report. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Myself and staff are available for any other questions.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, do we have public comment on this?
We do not have any public comments for item two.
Okay, then the board have a motion?
Is there a move?
We have a motion and a second for staff recommendation. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Okay. For item three, this is the Housing and Infill Workshop.
All right, I'm going to kick it off with just a few brief comments here at the beginning before Todd jumps in, but before I do that, I just wanted to mention that was Jacob's first board presentation, and he did an absolutely fantastic job, certainly better than the first time I was here.
If you could instruct him to do it a little faster next time.
Will do.
All right, so as you're keenly aware, last year, your board adopted a resolution that really did three things. It identified a suite of issues relative to the housing affordability and supply crisis we're facing, process-related issues, et cetera. It identified a very clear goal, and that's for us to be the best place to build in the region. And then it set forth a roadmap for us to get there, including customer service enhancements, process improvements, being creative, being flexible, taking risks, et cetera. You know, these issues have grown over many, many years, and they're going to take many years to solve, but I do think we've made tremendous progress. We were at your board just a couple of weeks ago to provide our six-month progress report. Staff, I'm just super proud of how much they've dug into this effort and how much they're putting towards it right now. I'm hearing a lot of positive feedback from the development community, so I think we're very much on our way. Still work to be done, but really happy where we're sitting currently. Still work to be done, but really happy where we're sitting currently. But there are, as I'd mentioned last time we were in front of the board, there are limitations as to what staff can do. Certain things can only be done by way of action of this board. Obviously, budgetary considerations are certainly something well within your purview as, you know, the body that sets forward those priorities for the county, and also things like zoning code changes and county code changes. So that's really the lens that we're looking through this workshop through today, is things that are sort of in your sphere of control, and we're going to have a number of questions for you as outlined in the staff report regarding some proposed actions we want to put on the table. You know, we can have perfect processes, but without some of these changes, I don't think we're going to be able to hit the goals that we've set forth. So, you know, by way of that resolution, you asked us to take a number of risks. I think, you know, I'm taking a risk today posing some of these questions to you because these are tough questions, right? These are very big questions and not easy ones to wrestle with. And, you know, if I may be so bold, I would encourage the board to take some risks, too. And, you know, what we're talking about today is seeking your direction that will help us launch a series of, you know, hopefully zoning code amendments, county code changes, et cetera. But we're not asking for decisions today, right? We're trying to shape up the world of the amendments that we want to start kicking off. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of process between today and the end, and a lot of ability to course correct if need be. So, you know, hoping for some bold direction and set us on that course, but again, being able to course correct if need be throughout that process. You know, one of the key things we'll talk about today, and not to steal too much of Todd's thunder, but really looking for direction to try to make more development ministerial or by right. And I know this board is well aware, when we get into discretionary approvals, we're adding significant time, money, we're kicking in SEQA, a lot of process, and in some cases, at least in our opinion, that might not be necessary because some of the programmatic decisions your board has made has already provided the level of guidance needed, and another series of process may not be necessary. And we see some of our neighboring jurisdictions benefiting from those changes they've made in the past, whereby we've, we've had developers here that can essentially build downtown by way of a building permit and go. And here, you know, we have processes in place that require upwards of two years for the same project because, you know, a minor use permit requirement or what have you that kicks in SEQA, public process, multiple hearing bodies, et cetera. And as, you know, I've become fond of this quote that I've used a number of times, you know, capital flows the path of least resistance, right? So if you can invest a dollar over here with certainty that tomorrow you're going to get a return, or a dollar over here, and it's two years of process, and you're not, you're not sure if you're going to get a return at all, you know, those are the types of decisions some of our development community members are facing. So that's the type of thing we're talking about, creating certainty, shortening timeframes, saving time, saving money, and really setting our development community up for success. So next time we present to you that Rena table, we have a whole lot bigger numbers in those columns off to the right. And I'll just give you sort of one example, you know, ADU construction. So for better or worse, the state of California has set forth a whole series of new laws that essentially compel us to treat ADUs as ministerial, or very close to that. And we've seen it in the numbers. So, you know, back in 2017, 18, 19, we were issuing 10, 20, 30 ADU building permits a year. The last two years, 171 and 157. Now, obviously, there's other factors related to, you know, the push for ADU construction and the desire for it, but I would posit that at least part of that is due to the fact that it is so much easier to build ADUs than it once was. And I think we can realize the same benefit by putting forward the same type of environment for other types of construction to, you know, make housing easier to develop and certainly infill of all type within our commercial corridors primarily, I think, again, would set up that environment for success. So with that, I'd like to kick it over to Todd. Hopefully, I didn't steal too much of your thunder. We're going to be talking a lot more than just ministerial and by right development today, but thought I'd sort of seed the discussion with that because it's just so very important from my perspective.
All right, thank you, Dave, for the introduction. Todd Smith, your Planning Director, kicking us off. And when we get to some of these pieces, I'm going to turn it over to Claudia Wade for the financial incentives, but really wanted to give the policy context upfront. Dave already covered a lot of that, but also want to set the stage for ways the public can engage in this workshop today. What we're showing on the screen here is the three buckets of key policy considerations, which are process, hearing body authority, and funding incentives. And each one of those, on each one of those slides, I've got a reminder to myself to pause for public comment so that the board can hear what everybody in the room here or online has to say about these issues rather than holding that till the end. Hopefully, that will inform any feedback that the board provides to staff today. All right, so I'm just going to jump into it. For the policy context here, we really find ourselves in the midst of a confluence of policies that all come together related to infill, to housing, and to climate. And so Dave mentioned the Development Review Process Initiative. We're in the midst of that. In September of last year, the board had its retreat related specifically to infill and housing opportunities. We just in the last presentation spent a great deal of discussion on the Rena targets. We know that those are very lofty, and we're trying to get there as best we can to show that difference in that far right column next year, hopefully. We also, last year, had the SHRA Affordable Housing Plan that the board adopted. This is, goes into this discussion today. We also have adopted policy by the board in our general plan, a number of land use, transportation, circulation, other policies and goals that are specific to achieving a robust development opportunity in infill corridors. And that is connected intrinsically, in my opinion, to our draft climate action plan and the board's climate neutrality, or excuse me, carbon neutrality goals. We're also on this four-year cycle of the SA-COG MTPSES update. A lot of discussion happening right now about infill versus other types of development. And then over the last seven years, we've been annually dealing with housing-related legislation. We see that on a regular basis coming down from the state, pushing local jurisdictions to do more ministerial by right, trying to achieve those production goals. So that's the context that we're in the middle of today. And I'm not going to belabor this slide because I think Jacob covered a lot of it already, but clearly, we have a lot going on. On the left, we have all of our housing, not all, a lot of our housing element implementation programs. On the right of this slide, we have our zoning code and SPA amendments that are already in progress. So I'll just skip ahead. This is that same Rena slide from the last presentation with one additional column on the right showing just on average the units needed per year over the next five years. If we were, if the county was to meet the Rena targets, these are the numbers that we would need to hit each year for the next five years.
Sorry, Todd. Supervisor Desmond.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quick, I was going to ask this with Justin, but since it was his first time, I didn't want to, you know, keep him up here longer than he needed to be. But on this, Todd, we talked about it in the context of the master plan communities, the unit, the units that are, I guess, in the process. Do you have a sense of, just based on applications that have been filed, how many are in the pipeline right now, infill housing units? Any sense at all?
I'd say a couple hundred.
That's it, for the entire unincorporated county?
Affordable units?
Actually, at all income levels.
Oh, I don't have that.
So a couple hundred affordable, and okay.
Yeah, I'd say three to 500, maybe more, if we're talking tentative maps and the like as well.
Okay.
And real quick, Todd, I think even in the height of the market, we weren't producing this many units back in 2004 or '05.
I'd say at the height of the market, and we can dig this up if necessary, I'd say probably we would issue about 1,000 to 1,100 building permits in the unincorporated county per year.
Okay.
Single-family dwellings. That doesn't include apartments or things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so just to get this out of the way, we did a little bit of comparison here with a number of jurisdictions. City of Sacramento is one, it's right here in our backyard, or maybe we're in their backyard, I'm not sure. Doesn't matter. The point of comparison here was the city's ministerial approval of infill housing program. It was implemented in 2020, and this really shows the effectiveness of a local program that goes above and beyond legislated requirements. And so this slide shows the city's number of projects that are going through the SB35 process, which is a piece of legislation that became effective January of 2018, goes through January 2026. The number of projects that the city has as of last year really resulted in only 126 affordable units. They developed their own process whereby it goes above and beyond. Projects are not subject to environmental review or public hearings, and you can see the math here. The city process, they're getting 728 market rate, even more affordable units, 889. So this, to me, is just an example of what can be achieved through those ministerial processes.
Supervisor Serena.
Thank you. In terms of the last statement about the projects not having to undergo environmental review, were they all negdekt?
No, they were exempt. And actually, that's an excellent point. Because the city of Sacramento is a city, it can use their, I think it's class 32 infill in cities. There's a specific exemption carve-out in SEQA for projects that meet that criteria, and they have to be within a city and among, among a number of other things. The county is not able to use that.
So I'm hopeful that someone from CSAC is watching right now, because if that requires legislative intervention, that seems like fairly low loin fruit, right?
Yeah, and if I may mention, I actually flew down to Southern California with a delegation, well, really from around the state, but went with members of SA-COG and other jurisdictions around here to meet with OPR, HCD, and a number of high-level staff from state agencies, and that was one of the handful of issues that I raised whereby an urbanized county like us who has, you know, city-like development patterns and municipal service provision responsibilities can't benefit from the same type of SEQA exemption. So we did put that on their radar and continue to fight for that.
Good, thank you. All right. This next slide here is another example because a picture is worth 1,000 words. This slide is the San Juan Apartments project on Stockton Boulevard. It is an affordable project. It also received a $2 million Green Means Go grant from SA-COG to fund off-site infrastructure. It's also receiving funding through SHRA. We anticipate this project going to construction this year. On the right of this slide, you can see the requested deviations this project needed to go through as a result of the county's development standards for multifamily housing. I'll say not all projects are the same, obviously, but we know that a number, in fact, the vast majority of our multifamily projects aren't able to meet our development standards. And to me, as staff, that means the project, or excuse me, the problem isn't the multifamily project. If most of our projects can't meet the development standards, there's something wrong with our development standards. There, there is, as a result of legislation a few years ago, we had to update all of our multifamily development standards to be entirely objective, which removed a lot of flexibility that we had previously. To me, that also means that perhaps our multifamily development standards should be revised, whether it's related to landscaping, or parking, or private open space, what have you. We need to take a look at this in order to figure out what's going to work best for our partners who are actually building these projects.
So, Todd, can I? And this is also, this is not even very low income, this is workforce housing.
It's a combination, but yes.
Yeah. And I'll tell you, this was also, when it comes to, and you probably want me to wait and make comment after, but some of the things that we look at in projects like this, now we have to balance all the time equity and social equity and social justice with amenities. I know that one of the topics of discussion on this one was whether or not, you know, there's a swimming pool, which is fairly standard in SHRA-funded projects. And, you know, I understand that people who live in socioeconomic depressed areas have the right and should benefit from certain amenities, but at the same time, if a swimming pool and the ongoing cost, this is just one example, the ongoing cost of a swimming pool is keeping housing from being built for people to have roofs over their head, then we have to make those hard decisions and look at where our priorities are. Little editorializing there, thank you.
So here's where we get to the meat of this. And for each one of these slides where we're recommending certain improvements, whether it's process-related or hearing body authority, the way I've broken this out is defining the what first, and then the why, and then the how. So here we have the what, so maximizing the use of land that is already zoned for multifamily housing. And what I mean by that is that the board has already made the policy decision in establishing the zoning for these properties. But we also have these development standards that, to some extent, constrict or constrain the availability of the entire site, which is not to say that we should eliminate all of them, but it's a constraint that we're dealing with. And so the intent here is to maximize the availability of that land, that utility of that land, and get to more by right ministerial approvals if the projects are consistent with those development standards, those being the ones that we eventually will revise. We find that things like excessive setbacks, extensive landscaping, some of those amenity requirements can become constraints. The why of this one is because, as I said before, we have most of our multifamily projects needing a special development permit or other sort of entitlement. That increases time of processing, it increases the cost, and our goal is to increase the certainty, reduce those times of processing and the costs. And so we can accomplish this through amending the zoning code, and these are just some examples here of some ideas here. So we have a minor use permit provision for multifamily projects greater than 150 units. So you could have a multifamily site that's zoned appropriately, but for whatever reason, it's bigger than an acreage that requires less than 150 units. I personally don't know the difference between 149 and 151, but that one will trigger a minor use permit.
It's two.
Thank you.
That's why he's the chair.
Thank you for that clarification. But that's just one example, and Dave mentioned a project that we've been working on for a year and a half plus, and it's a minor use permit. It requires that extra time, extra cost. Other examples, you know, reducing parking minimums, we're seeing legislation in recent years that forces jurisdictions to reduce those parking minimums, particularly in areas proximate to transit. It makes more sense. Multifamily development standards, generally, those height, the setbacks, the landscaping, things of that nature. And then the design review program, I'll touch on this very generally because it's not fully fleshed out yet, but what we're trying to accomplish there is figure out ways where we're focusing on the important things as it relates to design review. Obviously, staff and the board, you want high-quality projects in your communities. We want communities to benefit from new development. But oftentimes, we find ourselves, because of our development standards and our guidelines that have become so prescriptive, we have a laundry list of things we have to check, and there may not be that important, frankly. And here's the first slide where I've got the reminder for public comment opportunity. And so this first question on this slide is just simply asking the question, "Board, do you want to consider," or staff to pursue revisions to development standards that are related to all these things, height, setbacks, landscaping, conversions from non-residential uses, and parking, simply so we can maximize the use of multifamily zone land?" That's the first one. The second one is similar, but it's related to non-residential because it's not all about the housing. Certainly, housing is very important in the time that we're in, but we also need that non-residential, that economic impact in these communities so that we can have more jobs closer to housing and things of that nature. So it's really the same question as number one, just from a non-residential perspective. And we see a number of our non-residential projects going through right now, similar constraints, and in infill areas, things are tight. We've got, you know, existing utilities, we've got buildings on each side, perhaps. It's just a hard thing to deal with. The third question here is really getting at missing middle housing types. So when we're talking about multi-unit buildings and neighborhood scale, we're talking about duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes in areas that are designated for single-family residential homes. Currently, in our zoning code, these are not permitted in RD1 through RD7 zones. They are allowed with a zoning administrator use permit, so that's They are allowed with a zoning administrator use permit, so that's a discretionary entitlement, in RD10 zoning. And you may or may not recall this, but we had a fairly intensive discussion in the rezone, or excuse me, zoning code amendment package in 2022. This was funded through SB2. There was a lot of discussion about appeal provisions for these types of housing projects or products. Rather than the Board of Zoning Appeals hearing an appeal, the appeal went all the way to the Board of Supervisors. So that's additional time, additional expense, if there is an appeal, obviously. But right now, that's the problem as it relates to missing middle housing. Numbers four and five on this slide are, I'd say, less in terms of, or lower on the priority list, just because we think these top three are going to move the needle a lot more. Four and five are really coming from questions that we get from the public, folks who are looking to build a lot of ADUs and/or build projects that, new residential projects, subdivisions that may have ADU components. So number four, the question is simply, "Do you want us to allow SB9 units, which is, you know, two units in the urban area on certain size lots, combining those with ADUs, which would then allow a total of four units?" So it would be double. And then number five is recent legislation, AB 1033 from last year, which allows independent sales of ADUs via a condo map. And this is an optional piece of legislation, meaning jurisdictions can adopt their own ordinance. And so I'm going to pause there first, if there are any questions of me, and then we can go to public comment on this one.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Thanks, and thank you, Todd. And really appreciate this hearing today. I think this is, you know, kind of to refer back to some of the comments of my colleagues here at the beginning at the RENA discussion. Like Supervisor Hume said, it's just anemic what we've been able to produce. And the reality is, we need to do this for so many reasons, both for tangible and intangible reasons in terms of the health of our community, but we also need to do this to stay out ahead of the legislature. Because the reality is, they will attempt to impose more and more on local municipalities if we do not do more to meet our RENA needs. So I appreciate all the work you've been doing on this, of course. So starting with number one, I am supportive of number one, but I just had a comment and kind of a question. I guess your, how much feedback do you want from us today? Because my thought on number one is absolutely, when we talk about some of the amenities, we talk about parking, those are easy. For me, it becomes a little tougher depending on where it is. And what I mean by that, you know where I'm going to go with this. I mean, I look at all the commercial corridors, and I think this is a much easier thing to have on those larger commercial corridors. But once you start getting into more of the collector roads, next, surrounded by single-family residences, single-story, I think it becomes tougher, especially tougher in terms of, I mean, you can, you know, projects that we're dealing with right now in District 3, for instance, where, you know, you have a three-story apartment complex, which will be on two sides looking down on single-story residences. And to me, that's one of my biggest concerns when it comes to making these changes to development standards, that we pay particular attention to where you have, where they abut maybe a single-family, single-story residence. I want to make sure that we still, maybe through design review or some development standards, retain the ability to make sure they're properly built to reduce someone looking into a balcony right into someone's backyard from a third story and have proper, you know, landscaping. I don't want to, I don't want to remove some of those requirements. Does that make sense?
It does, and I appreciate the specific comments. That's one of the things we're looking at. Obviously, we didn't tee up anything for you to react to today in terms of those, that level of detail, but I did bring a copy of the current multifamily development standards. And there is an example that, this was through that 2022 zoning code amendment, where we develop step-back multifamily setbacks for upper stories where we have a multifamily adjacent to a single-family. So if that's something that you, as a board, want to retain or modify, I'll just tell you what it says right now. For that second story in a situation where you have multifamily adjacent to a single-family, the second story setback is 50 feet, the third and higher story is 75 feet, the first story is 25 feet.
Okay. And I think that's kind of consistent with the discussion we had when District 5 Supervisor's predecessor was here. I mean, that was a particular concern at that point as well when we had this discussion. So that would be something that's important to me on number one. But otherwise, I am very supportive of making changes that will accelerate infill housing. Dave?
Yeah, I was just going to offer, by way of process here, so as Todd alluded to, you know, the more direct and detailed feedback we get, you know, the easier it makes the job we have ahead of us. But what we do have ahead of us, or our plan, is that we plan to take all of the feedback that we get from your board today and try to encapsulate that in what we're calling a resolution of intention and bring that back to the board, sort of like we did with the resolution that you passed last February, whereby we would try to capture this direction, put it in a document, put it back in front of you, make sure that captures your direction adequately, if not, we'll adjust, have the board take action on that. Then that becomes sort of our North Star as we start to process all of the changes we're talking about today. And then again, I do see some level of iteration over time, right? Where we're going to have to engage with the board, you know, as we come up with more specific changes, you know, test the waters with the board, et cetera. So really, we're at the very start of a marathon here, but the next step will be to capture your comments and bring it back to you in short order.
Okay. Oh, thank you. And I, thank you. And it just, you know, in my conversations with both of you, you look at our RENA allocations, and obviously, most of those are along these commercial corridors. So I just think that, yes, giving staff a lot of discretion to make those changes in those areas in particular, I'm very supportive of. Number two, also very supportive of number two, you know, my concern is, Todd, like you see with these, and I'm glad you're bringing this up, because I want to see economic investment as well, but I don't want that only economic investment to be drive-throughs and mini-storage in District 3, which is what we see. So, you know, just keep that in mind. We always have these conversations, we don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good. Something is better than nothing, but I don't want to create conditions where we lose all control or influence over all these economic uses in our older suburban communities. Number three, I'd like to, you know, think about this a little more and like to understand, how much do you think this change could get us, Todd? Do you have a sense of that?
In terms of a number, no, I don't. I will say, as an example, I'll use my neighborhood. I live within about 250 feet of three duplexes. It's an older neighborhood, it's got that built into the neighborhood. It's got duplexes on the corners, they look just like single-family homes, just that they've got two access points, two driveways, two garages. It works really well. I think there's some market for that product type or others. I don't think, I'll say, in terms of the other, the first two, or the first one as it relates to housing, I guess, I'll say this one is probably less, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't pursue it, just because it is really geared at that missing middle component.
And one of my, I think one of my concerns is if we eliminate or reduce parking requirements for some of these, then you're more in the interior residential neighborhoods, and it's going to have definitely more of an impact on those, you know, smaller streets. So that's my concern there. And four and five, I have some, certainly some concerns with. And then I'll stop there. The last thing I'll say is, you know, as I'm going through, look at your PowerPoint, kind of looking ahead and the report in the other attachment, I see all these different product types that are just, they look great. I mean, it would be great to have some of those show up in unincorporated Sacramento County. I think that's one of our problems vis-à-vis, or with respect to community concerns. They see all these apartment complexes that were built in the early 70s, and they are not attractive buildings. But you look at some of these other products that are out there, I mean, they're, they're great-looking. So I think once we see some of these new products come online, new projects with these new products, that will go a long way to, I think, alleviating some of the community concerns about the steps we're taking here today, what we're discussing today. Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, thank you for hosting this workshop. You know, this is a very important issue, it's one I've been giving a lot of thought to. I want to thank everybody that's come out, and I hope that you all come up and take this opportunity to provide robust input, because obviously, I've got a lot of experience in the industry, and I'm pretty opinionated on the matter, but, you know, I don't suppose to think that I have all the answers. I want to ask a question first, though, relative to your presentation and kind of what the city's doing here that has really had positive effects. Is there a change in the definition of project or other SEQA triggers when you go to ministerial as opposed to discretionary? You made some mention of being able to dispense with SEQA processing.
Yeah, I don't think there's necessarily a change in the definition of a project. I think what we have to look at is, first, when we get a project application in our, I'll say our workflow, for lack of a better term, we review it against what our zoning code says, and then any applicable zoning code or other provisions to determine whether it's a discretionary entitlement, or whether it's something that's ministerial, meaning there are objective standards by which we can evaluate a project. If it meets those objective standards, we must approve it. That process, that ministerial process is not subject, or the project that goes through a ministerial process does not trigger SEQA.
Okay.
So that, in my view, and I think everybody in the audience would agree, that would greatly speed up the process.
Part of the issue being, if I may, if a project comes in under those auspices, but for whatever reason, given the configuration of the infill site, can't provide the required 10 feet of landscaping and only can provide eight feet of landscaping, now you've tripped into a special development permit, now you've triggered SEQA, and now you're off to the races, or whatever the opposite of the races is, right? So that's why we're talking about development standards being so critical and having some level of flexibility, because right now, and I've been in many, many meetings with developers where we are, you know, trying to, you know, help them through the zoning code, but not having a lot of flexibility at our disposal to work through those issues.
And thank you, because I think this is a linchpin piece to this whole discussion, is that SEQA by design is meant to be an impediment to expediency. And, you know, for good reason, potentially, but nonetheless, it absolutely can bring the brakes to something and cost a lot of money, and not necessarily, you know, in the case of a 10-foot to eight-foot setback, have a material change on the project at the end of the day. But the other thing that I just heard there is that if we provide these flexibility, and this kind of goes back to what Supervisor Desmond was talking about, is that it's not necessarily a one-size-fits-all catchment, and that RD20 in a brand newly-approved specific plan does not equal RD20 in a revitalized, reused commercial corridor. And I've said this before, that, you know, the idea of concentric zoning as opposed to Euclidean, where we say, "Look, in these areas where we're really trying to spur reinvestment, we might have more relaxed standards, we might have more ministerial approvals, we might remove the decision-makers from the process on purpose in order to speed things up." But that doesn't apply over here where you're dropping in, you know, a 10-story complex in a single-family neighborhood, right? And so I think that's an important thing to consider. So as we look at this, on question number one, I think that's important, because while reducing parking standards can do great things for flexibility of design, if all you're doing is offloading the parking of the people who are going to be living there into an existing neighborhood and causing consternation, then I think now you really have gone against maybe what the decision-makers would have been able to prevent as far as standing up for their existing constituents. And I'm going to come back to existing constituents, because I think it plays into a lot of these things. And so then, you know, again, back to the standards and some of the facts that you said, if we're running up against all these hurdles, then maybe it's our standards, not the projects. I think as we go through this exercise, it's important to weigh the intent behind why those standards were adopted in the first place. And so that maybe just doing away with them wholesale, you know, will be, produce a lesser product than would have been otherwise. And so it was a good standard, and it maybe should be there, we should just remove other barriers or impediments. So number one, I think absolutely we need to explore that, that's kind of the key provision to this whole thing. Number two, I'm not sure I understand the question as far as, is this going to look at reinvestment from a commercial standpoint and not a residential standpoint?
That's exactly right. So it's the same problem, we're looking for a similar solution, whether it's, you know, retail, commercial, industrial, whatever. The development standards are sometimes a challenge, particularly in infill areas where you've got the existing built environment you have to work around, or a developer has to work around. It's really the same question as number one, just on the non-residential component.
Then I think it's worth exploring, absolutely.
We do, too.
Yeah. Good. Number three, I've got a question about, if I understand it, SB10 essentially made any residentially-zoned parcel four dwelling units by right. Is that correct?
It's another one like AB 1033, where the local jurisdiction needs to establish an ordinance to allow that.
Okay, so it's an opt-in provision, not SB9, which is a thou shalt?
Correct.
Okay. Then I think it makes sense. You know, we, in most of our subdivisions, we built duplexes into them, they've aged well, they provide a different product type, and they're also a different level of ownership opportunity for people looking to have a little bit of investment income. So I think that that is something that ought to definitely be allowed. I am against, number four, just as a, because I'm against SB9 in general, because I think it's a bait and switch on people who made a major investment into a built environment and then have the rug pulled out from under them by essentially taking what was an RD4, an RD5, or even an RD7 subdivision and doubling it. And then now with this, you would be quadrupling it. And so from an aesthetic impact of now having the feel of the neighborhood go away, I think it also is going to create some serious infrastructure concerns with the fact that you're throwing more sugar in the same bag on a subdivision that has a sewer, water, and electricity sized for the original proposed number of units. I think that's going to be a major reckoning someday. So I'm against that. And then I'm also against item number five, because I just see that creating a major headache down the line, where you have just such fractured ownership in such close proximity in a neighborhood that was never designed for that level. It just, to me, I think it's, as you say, it's not moving the needle enough for the headache that it's potentially going to create. So those are my comments, but I look forward to hearing from other people. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Todd, and everyone for bringing this. I, as a real estate broker, over time, I'm sensitive to real estate values, point-of-sale charges, onerous fees, and I'm also really sensitive around the financing and someone's ability to finance and also to appraise a property. And then having been in, you know, in conversations around, like Sayonara in Citrus Heights, where the whole street was built with these apartments, and it was kind of overbuilt, and it became a blighted area, and it was like the blight of the region. It was like all the crime was on Sayonara, it was the high crime in all of Sacramento. And so I think a big, you know, a big important concept around all of this is design. Because if, like if you go to Santa Barbara, you see a city that is so well-designed, and they have, you know, moratorium on how you can build stuff, and when you drive through there, it's gorgeous. And then you go to other areas where you have, you know, Kmart over here, and, you know, small homes, and you have really nice areas in the middle of rural area, or one nice house in the middle of a rural area. And so I'm, I think, in your report, you mentioned, you know, offsetting windows and private spaces and designing in a way that would, you know, bring value, but at the same time, allow you to maximize the space and bring different things into a community. And so for number one, I feel like that I'm a yes on that, except I'm hoping you can bring back ideas on how we can just have design concepts that are consistent with the area that they're building in. And for different areas of the county, that looks different. So I think what Supervisor Hume said is really true. It's not a one-size-fits-all, it kind of depends on the area. And I feel the same way about commercial, and I love the And I feel the same way about commercial, and I love the idea of finding ways to do mixed use. And also, on commercial, there's a lot of areas in my district where, you know, someone might want to do things, but there's, there just isn't, they don't have the ability to meet the environmental, you know, green, you know, walkability and complete streets, and they have things they want to do, but they're not quite sure how to work that out. So I'm not quite sure what that means. I don't know if that means, you know, build it up to the street and have areas behind the building, but, or an alley behind the building like they have in Sacramento City, but again, it goes to design. I feel like on number three, should revisions also be made to neighborhood scale, multifamily buildings, triplexes, fourplexes, for single-family areas? In Secog, we've seen where other communities nationwide have made some improvements that were really beautiful, where they mixed, you know, they brought multifamily and other types of units onto the same street, and yet those multifamily units look just like a single-family house. And I think design is the key to making it, you know, setting a, I guess, a policy that can actually fit more situations, depending on that, what area you're building in. I have a little bit of concern around four and five. Part of it relates to how do you separate out utilities and parking, and when you bring a number of, you know, one ADU unit is one thing, but when you're talking about three or four, then how many cars are out on the street, and do you run into that same, that thing that's going to bring real estate values down? If you drive down a street and you're looking for a house to buy, and the yards look terrible, and there's all these crummy cars, you just don't feel at home there, and you say, I'm not going to buy, it's like bad for real estate values. So the last thing I want to do is support something that's going to impact the existing real estate values for people that have been there for decades and expected it was going to go that way. But at the same time, there are so many people who have parents, or children, or special-needs children who need, who would benefit by these multifamily or ADU-type situations. And then the last thing I wanted to mention right now is, we're already having this conversation, people coming to us asking for off-grid, tiny home, you know, they're asking for another step down in a community where, I mean, how low can you go, and how does that impact whether or not you can finance it, or the life, does the life of the unit extend beyond the cost of the unit, and how much does it cost to hook it up? I mean, does it even make sense? And so I think for me, it goes to the first things, you know, real estate values, the fees, and how do you, how do you separate out the utilities and everything without having onerous fees? And then financing and costs for financing and appraising, how do you, you know, how does that? I guess, no matter what we do, as we begin to increase density and different types of units, there's going to be a challenge with finding comps, but those are just things that are coming to my mind. I'm open to finding processes. I think it's really great that we're trying to find processes that, you know, improve our processes and eliminate some of the overlap of what, you know, developers have to go through. We're basically just causing them to have to do this over and over, you know, the delays are costing money. So I think those are my comments for now. Thank you, Todd.
Supervisor Serna.
Thanks, Chair. I'm going to try my best to be very brief, because I know we have other questions on subsequent slides. In terms of number one, that's a yes for me. I'd just point out, especially as it relates to, as you pointed out, conversions from non-residential uses. I think as it relates to those conversions, of course, the pandemic taught us a lot, it's not going to just be downtown Sacramento, that sees a lot of change and conversions of especially office-based to residential, but I think in some part, other far-flung parts of the unincorporated county, that may also be the case. So, yeah, I think we should definitely keep the envelope in which we consider multifamily potential kind of as flexible and loose as possible. I would say yes to number two, in terms of recognizing the constraints, as long as, by recognize, we don't kind of go in the other direction, thinking that we, you know, want to make it more difficult. I don't think that's the exercise here. So that one's a little ambiguous, the way it was presented, to be quite honest with you. In terms of number three, I couldn't help but think about kind of my personal history growing up, where I did in older neighborhoods here in the city of Sacramento, where this historically, I think, has worked very well. I'm not suggesting that, especially in newer development scenarios in greenfield areas of the unincorporated county, that that is going to be the case. In other words, I'm not trying to draw a direct parallel between Midtown and what may or may not be developed along the Highway 16 corridor, but I will just say that I think having a mix of triplexes, fourplexes, duplexes, and single-family homes is not just achievable, I think it actually makes for a better character of neighborhood. You get a wider diversity of people, you get a greater diversity of architecture, and so I, you know, I think that's a no-brainer for me. While I understand the concerns that I've heard from my colleagues thus far in four and five, I also have some concerns, but maybe for different reasons. I wouldn't mind having the ability to approve up to four dwelling units on a parcel. I think, though, the parcel size needs to be taken into account, and maybe there's a size threshold that could be applied. And as it relates to the sales of ADUs, my concern there has to do with speculation. So if we're to go down that path and permit and provide for the independent sales of the ADUs, I would want to see that implemented such that it is done in the interest of providing affordable units, not just speculative sale, especially in a market like we're in now, where you can probably, you know, sell ADUs for what used to be the price point for standalone single-family RD 5 and RD 7 products. So that would be my concern there. So that's what I, that's what I have for this slide.
Thank you. I'll, I can make this real brief, because Supervisor Serna, I agree with one through five. So that would be a hard yes to one through three, and a curious at four and five. You know, maybe on, you know, the concerns that, for example, Supervisor Desmond had regarding the commercial, maybe we look at, you know, what the process is and just narrow it as much as we possibly can to those, as far as what we consider to be incompatible uses. For, I mean, he, the one that you brought up, I think the classic is the mini-storage, you know, isn't compatible with, you know, but that's a small percentage. Four and five, I'm a little, the reason I'm kind of, I don't know that it's going to come into play that much, you know, to be honest with you. I don't think it solves our housing problem, but it might, you know, be important to, you know, some individuals that are looking at doing this. But number, you know, as far as the missing middle goes, Todd, I don't know, I think we're neighbors, because you described my neighborhood. And, you know, and the pocket Greenhaven probably has more duplexes and even maybe multifamily for a neighborhood like that than any per capita, than any neighborhood in the county. And I would hardly say it's not a desirable place to be, and they fit in just fine, so this thing about duplexes and triplexes and fourplexes can't work is ridiculous, as Supervisor Serna said, through architecture and through creativity. I've seen them add to a neighborhood's interest level, and also the variations of the product and the diversity of people who live there. I think it can make neighborhoods stronger, not the other way around. And I guess, I would like to take another look at, just specifically at, when it comes to the setback issue, the, as Mr. Dufonti pointed out, the eight-foot versus 10-feet of landscaping, all that. I want to take a hard look at that. I thought the last time this came before the board, quite frankly, I was disappointed in our decision, and didn't think we went far enough, so I would like to push that envelope a little more. With that, I'm done, and I see no one else plugged in. So is there, is there public comment on this particular section?
We do.
Thank you.
Chris?
Good afternoon, Board. Chris Norm, North State BIA. I just put my speaker card to talk on this item, didn't realize we're going to be giving three bites of the apple, so thanks for that. But I think that in general, we're supportive of the wide array of measures that are being proposed to you, and I would just underscore the fact that, you know, right now, we're not giving a vote, we're just giving, you know, some general direction as to, you know, tease out these things. And I think those, I don't, don't close off any boxes of what you might want to do at this point, because if you have some concerns or ways you want to massage these policy issues, I think that they can come back with some alternatives. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. George?
Good afternoon, George Carpenter, Wind Communities. I have to actually leave at 2:30, so I'm only going to take one of those three opportunities today. Chairman, members of the board, I want to first to start by high level and tell you that, you know, I've been coming to these board chambers for almost 25 years, and the team to the right is the best it's looked. And as a person who puts investment into bringing projects online, you look at can you get it done? And the team that's over here has shown that they can get it done, places like North Vineyard Station are really starting to take off. And for a guy like me who's looking at, well, hey, can we get something started out in Alberta, which has sat out there for years and we haven't been able to, this is the kind of team that you want to go to work with and try to make something like that happen. So I'd encourage you to continue to support them, both in giving them budget to hire good staff, and in supporting them in policy direction. And it's starting to work. We've got work to do, but it's starting to get there. And then what I'd finally like to say is, continue to be open on these, on these standard changes. We are a seller of multifamily site that should be under construction right now, but it's still going through the process. We got hung up on the 150 dwelling unit issue, got hung up on some design standard issues. And there are things that just, this is a site that's graded, it's got utility stub to it, it's zoned, I mean, it's ready to go, but it just can't get through the process. And so continue to, I hope you continue to give staff good direction. Thanks.
Thank you, George. Nick?
Chair Kennedy, members of the board, Nick Avdis, Law Offices of Avdis and Cucci. Again, wasn't aware that it was going to be broken down like this, but it's just as well, because I too have to leave and won't be able to stay to the end. I would say, big-picture-wise, I think I'd like to echo some of the comments that I've already heard. I mean, most definitely, this, the culture that I see that's flourishing now at the county and continuing to establish itself is one of accountability and one of ownership. And really, overall, what we want is goal-oriented in terms of a culture of success. And I, kudos to Dave and David, but also kudos to the former CEO, obviously. I had a conversation early on with Ann about some of the ideas that she had in her mind about bringing on process and culture changes. And frankly, I thought it was pretty lofty goals, but I am, I have been pleasantly surprised, and honestly, a lot of credit should be given to your leadership and the staff you have implementing this. So I do want to touch on one point, certainly there's a lot more to do, but relative to what the purpose of today is, I think today is really to give your staff certainly some latitude to tease out some of these concepts, which admittedly, I mean, there's a lot packed into that slide, and there's a lot more packed into the forthcoming slides. I think what would be good is to allow staff the latitude to bring back the details on some of these concepts, because therein lies a lot of the questions. The county is not one thing, the diversity of neighborhoods and communities in the county is unlike any other, or certainly like any urbanized city within the county. And so I think the changes that are being, comments that are being sought certainly speak to that, and I think you should allow staff to bring back some concepts along those lines. One of the interesting concepts, certainly that I've had the opportunity on an introductory basis to talk to staff about, is certainly the tax-based incentives that could be available for infill projects of a certain category. There's a lot of detail to be worked out here, but I would ask that this board, you know, certainly, direct staff to examine these possibilities and certainly bring back even a pilot project. I know I'm working with SKK Development on certainly one of those concepts, and certainly we'd like the ability to work with staff on a lot more of those details to bring to you. So thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you. Ralph? And as Ralph's coming up, I just want people to know, I'm going to be a little loose with the clock today, and not hold as strictly as I often do to two minutes, because this is a workshop, and I think that this is as much hearing from, you know, you as anything. So go ahead, Ralph.
Yeah, I'm Ralph Proper.
Don't abuse it, Ralph.
Pardon me?
Don't abuse it.
Okay, I'll take half an hour, no. I'm Ralph Proper, I'm with Ecos, the Memorial Council of Sacramento, we've been around over 50 years, and we were, in that time, we've been for infill development, especially transit-oriented, as opposed to sprawl development for the sake of habitat and for getting healthier air. And now increasingly, that's what we need to do for dealing with the, with two crises, the climate change crisis and the affordable housing homelessness crisis that we have. I know that we don't want to make change, but these changes are upon us, and so I'm glad that staff here is making these suggestions of the changes that would help deal with these problems, these crises that we have. I'll just say more specifically that, well, I grew up back east, there are certain examples I know of there, in the Boston area, in the Washington DC area, where transit-oriented development has been a big success economically for those, for those cities and their neighborhoods around them, in terms of getting multifamily housing along the transit lines, and then the step-down zoning going away from that. So I hope that you'll entertain the changes that we need to prevent crises from building further. And I'll just add, too, the, I've heard a lot of politicos around here say that our homelessness is because we're so nice to them, and they're coming from outside. That's not what the data, the polling shows, the interviews, they're a local, it's made a lot worse by people, richer people from the Bay Area, moving here and driving up the prices and making things less affordable. And the development that we've been getting has clearly been on the side of single-family detached housing, and we have to change that paradigm in view of the crises that we have to deal with. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ralph. Kent?
It probably doesn't go low enough. But anyway, my name's Kent Baker with Baker Williams Engineering Group, and I've been doing, representing infill projects for, I don't know, over 40 years now, I guess. And when they changed the zoning code, they took out a lot of things that discouraged the infill development on the small lot size, like, you go in Carmichael, Fair Oaks, and you got these two- and three-acre parcels left, and you come in and try to do a parcel map. Almost every time, it includes a special development permit. Either you can't quite meet the lot size, or you have a private drive to get back to it. Both of those items now include a special development permit, because you'll have more than two lots on a private road. I think the two lots on a private road just needs to be an exception to Title 22, not a special development permit, because it kicks almost every project into a special development permit. And when you go through these items and you try to do a multiple family... And when you go through these items and you try to do a multiple family, the existing zoning code doesn't provide for things like townhouses, so you can't go in with a multiple family and do a townhouse project without asking for 10, 12 deviations from it. The zoning code's just not set up for multiple family. As somebody who's worked in a number of jurisdictions, you have to watch, when you get out in a rural area and you do an apartment complex, you have to watch the parking requirements, so that you don't overload it. When you come in with a subdivision or apartment project in a subdivision area, you have to, you have to watch the parking. When you drive around the city of Sacramento, their projects, when they're high-rise and downtown and buildings at the back of right-of-way, they can work with their parking standards. But when you get an apartment project outside that in the city, where their parking standards are so much lower, the neighborhoods surround it with parking, parked cars on the residential streets. So you don't want to create that scenario in a neighborhood where you're trying to put apartments in. So you have to have that flexibility. I think the new staff has been great. They're trying to get the development process back to what it was when I first started. You know, working in Sacramento County was the best place to work, and it's got to get back to that, and I think your new staff is really working towards that.
Thank you. Thank you.
That concludes your public comments.
All right. Mr. Smith?
All right, so I will get back into presentation mode here. I will say it's an odd thing to adjust my flow with all of this, but we'll do it. All right.
Because you're not used to being interrupted.
I am, I've got two children. Okay, so moving on to the next slide. Okay, so this is where we're transitioning, transitioning, excuse me, into the Infill Accelerator Program. Attachment two of your board package is a draft of the infill program that was funded through, excuse me, a grant. This project, as Jacob presented earlier, is going to be finishing up this year, hopefully. But really, what we want feedback on today is this idea of repurposing one of our existing budgeted development program manager positions, repurposing that position to an infill coordinator with at least one associate planner, which has been requested, which will be going through a separate, the separate budget process. And really, what this individual would do is focus really intensely on infill opportunities in these commercial corridors. That's what this graphic is on the right side of the slide here. All of these existing commercial corridors have been identified for development potential in our general plan. A lot of these overlap with the county's five green zones that we designated in order to compete in the Green Means Go program, and they also overlap with our existing environmental justice communities. We see this individual really focusing on not just these corridors from a land use perspective, but trying to address the broader infrastructure constraints we have. As an example, the North Watt Avenue corridor has been on the books for over a decade. It has a substantial sewer issue that is a big constraint. That needs to be funded and constructed in order to make meaningful progress in the North Watt corridor. And this obviously goes above and beyond affordable housing. This is really, again, the entire focus would be on accelerating infill. And this person would also not just interact with internal county departments and infrastructure agencies, it would also get at those external groups, special districts, water purveyors, park districts, things of that nature.
Yes. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Todd, I think this is a great idea in terms of the, having an assignment that's specific to managing infill opportunities. The one part I disagree with, and in the interest of the spirit of this workshop providing direction to staff, and this one's for Mr. Villanueva, because it's budgetary, I don't like the fact that it's being presented as repurposing. I think this should be an additive position, because I think there's, it goes back to previous comments I and others have made, specific to the planning departments' woefully, woeful shortage of staff, given the multitude of projects that they are tasked with working on these days. So, totally supportive, think the concept is great, but I think this should be additive and it should appear as early as in our budget for '24, '25.
So I'll chime in to agree with that and Todd, but I do have a couple of questions about it as far as, so I'm really clear on what the role is, so that I can provide any comments if necessary. Is this for like a project manager for infill projects as they come in? Is it somebody who would work and, you know, look at opportunities for coordinating with various departments in order to see if we can coordinate the infrastructure needs and see if there's some way we can work together and more efficiently bring those costs down? And so is it to usher through projects, or is it a better policy position that you see?
I'd say it's a both. It could be both of those things, and I think one of the biggest challenges, as I mentioned, is the infrastructure.
Yeah.
Obviously, you as a board don't control the entirety of all the special districts, and so sometimes we need to interact with those special districts in order to prioritize and try to get them to prioritize certain activities that really help us as county staff implement the county's goals. This person would be, in that capacity, some sort of an ombudsman.
Right.
Interacting with those folks. Could even be, this is just an idea, working with the P-bids in an interactive way to help identify opportunity sites. Obviously, the private market does that pretty well already, but we want to be able to help streamline individual projects as well as more comprehensive approaches to those corridors.
So based upon that answer, I'm a big yes.
Yeah, and if I may add to that, you know, we've been talking about these commercial corridors, at least since 2004, when I was here last, and what we really haven't had is enough staff, frankly, or staff that can dedicate the time necessary to crack the nut. And there are some big nuts to crack here, right? So what we're looking for is somebody that can look at these infill areas from the developer's perspective, in concert with development interest, look at what actual barriers exist, and start formulating a plan to knock down those barriers. We've done a lot of really good planning on these corridors, but it's really been focused on envisioning what the future can be, a lot of community input, et cetera, less focus on sort of the nuts and bolts stuff, like Todd had mentioned, what's under the ground, right? How do you get a $30 million sewer line constructed? And right now, you know, for many years, we've sort of known the problem, but we haven't been able to, you know, set aside staff, the time and resources necessary to put a plan together to actually knock it down. So that's what I would envision this person doing in large part. Again, either somebody with development experience or somebody that can absolutely look through a developer's lens to make these areas of interest to developers. That's really the key, because if a developer can't make a profit by developing, they're not going to do it.
Right.
So we want to make sure that we have developable land that can turn a profit and provide the community benefit that comes along with it.
It'll also, we could also look at the opportunities for grants and other things to bring to bear that the county may have access to, that the private sector may not, and they'll be looking at developing a strategy and coordinating those efforts as well.
Great.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, appreciate the questions, and my colleagues agree 100% with the position. My only ask would be is that we add an area number 15, the section of Kiefer Boulevard between South Watt and Bradshaw.
Generally, in the Rosemont community.
Definitely.
Got it.
Are we into number two, or is...
I'm going to go.
Okay. So we're the next one? Okay.
Yeah.
But we didn't get to the SPAs and NPAs.
That's the one.
Oh, okay, all right. So we're still in the same section, though?
Oh, same section, yes.
Okay, okay.
So SPAs and NPAs, we've got 68 of these, adopted over a span of, I don't know, 50 years, multiple decades here. And as you might imagine, we have inconsistent approaches over those multiple decades, different geographical areas, and the logical conclusion is this creates a ton of implementation challenges, not just for us as staff, but also for folks who are trying to do business in the county. So, some of these, and this gets at, you know, how we have, we as a jurisdiction have chosen to regulate over the years. You know, some of them are very, very prescriptive, with very limited consideration for market conditions over time, or those infrastructure challenges that both I and Dave have mentioned. And so, we don't have this fully teed up for you today, but really, the question here is, and I think I know the answer, does the board want us to look at these SPAs, update them, revise them, eliminate them? And obviously, we're not going to do them all in one fell swoop. That's very challenging, given the fact that a lot of them don't point back to underlying zoning, so we have this, this analysis that we're working on to figure out really, excuse me, three different categories of the SPAs. The first one being, obviously, the highest development potential. We've already identified North Watt, that's funded through Green Means Go currently. These other ones that are more recent, I'll say, and they're vintage, the Fair Oaks Boulevard, North Highlands Town Center, Greenback, Stockton, Old Florintown, all of these SPAs are, I'll say, within the last 15 to 20 years, and have a great potential here. The second bucket is the highest number of public inquiries, so that means we've got development interests coming into us, asking, what can we do here? Those are North Watt, Fair Oaks, and Greenback. We have active applications on these corridors, and they're proving to be a challenge because of these, the lack of flexibility. I'll say the third general bucket is that all of the remainders, some that are really not a priority or a problem, but sometimes we periodically get increase on them. And then the fourth one is the NPAs. Those are kind of a different animal. They tend to be more in the residential area, older residential areas, not a lot going on in terms of development capacity there, and potentially politically challenging, given some of the community or neighborhood sentiment in those areas. But generally, that's the hierarchy that we see, and our intent would be to bring forward, obviously at a later date, after we do the analysis of all these SPAs, figuring out how to prioritize them based on the general feedback you've already provided on these other topics, teeing up a work plan and trying to prioritize and budget for these things over time.
Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Todd, and have had a lot of conversations with you about this as well. I'm very supportive of updating, revising, maybe even eliminating, in some cases, the SPAs, because I know the SPAs are the bigger impediment, and really focusing on the areas where there is that higher development potential. I don't support jettisoning all of these, either the SPAs or NPAs, especially because the NPAs aren't as big of an issue in terms of development. And I think you, you referenced this, you know, they, I think it's important to preserve that abilities for neighborhoods. It's kind of a hedge against being unincorporated, to create kind of a sense of community identity in a neighborhood, but we have to make sure that does not conflict with some of our larger priorities we're sitting here as a board. So, very supportive of you coming back with just that feedback from me, anyway. Thank you.
Supervisor Frost?
I just want to add to that, that I'm sensitive to some of the communities in my district who identify with their community general plan or their SPA, and I don't support completely eliminating what they have basically established their whole existence. They moved there for that reason and lived there for that reason, but I do support trying to find a way to bring them to the present and improve communications, or, you know, I don't know how you can merge it with a general plan, because a general plan is a higher level than a local plan that is more at a micro level and more detailed. So, I'm not sure what you have in mind, but I'm open to looking at it, but I hope you'll be sensitive to those communities that, I don't think they're all sensitive that way. I think there's just a few, and I know you know who they are, so.
Just one thing in response to that, I, one of the things that we're trying to tackle as it relates to the bigger picture policy, and Jacob alluded to this, in scoping or setting up a work plan for the general plan update, you know, we haven't even touched on community plans, and I'm not going to get into that today, because we don't have time. But there are other mechanisms, we believe as planners, to retain that sense of community identity, whether it's in Orange Vale or other locations. It doesn't always have to be an SPA, but there are other mechanisms that I think we, as part of our report back on the SPAs and NPAs, can figure out what mechanisms are appropriate, what are going to work well for those individual communities. And certainly, any comprehensive updates to these documents would go through a robust public engagement process to make sure we're not inadvertently losing that sense of identity that folks have.
Yeah, and the other thing I just want to mention is that we work so hard to try to support progress, and, you know, how can we make this happen? And so we make it happen for one, and we might make an exception there, and somebody two blocks down the street who wants to have a commercial enterprise is mad, because they perceive they're not going to get the same exception. And so now they're mad. So if there was a way to just say, this is the way it is for everyone, instead of having to make exceptions, and I don't know how you do that, I guess that's why you get paid the big bucks, but just saying.
Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I'll keep my comments brief, because I don't believe any SPAs or NPAs exist in District Five, so it doesn't necessarily affect my constituents directly, but I just want to go back to something that was spoken about by Supervisor Frost on the last item relative to, I think Santa Barbara was the example. And that is that, again, like I mentioned then, we should look to the intent behind the SPA and the NPA, because in some cases, it's not necessarily, again, looking for expediency or what can come in quickly. It is about maintaining those standards, that aesthetics, that community identity. And if you take a place like Solvang in California, or Leavenworth up in Washington, I mean, these communities took it to the extreme, and in the case of Leavenworth, they actually demanded that Starbucks change their standards if they wanted to come to town, rather than the other way around. So, you know, it does work, but it, and sometimes you are, you're passing up the quick exchange for the long-term, you know, goal. Right? So I'll just chime in and say that, yes, I particularly like, for example, you could almost do it, or one first rushover would be to look at it chronologically and look at the oldest ones first, because so many of them are irrelevant now. They don't, they just don't mean anything to the community in so many ways. Stockton Boulevard, for example, I can't, you know, Stockton Boulevard doesn't do anything to enhance Stockton Boulevard, but it does a lot of things to, you know, keep from happening the things we're talking about today, like infill. So, you know, those that are just irrelevant and actually a hindrance to the sound policies that we're trying to adopt here, I jettison them. So.
Supervisor Serna?
Thanks, Chair. I'll just say yes to the question, and I support staff's recommendation.
Supervisor Frost?
I just want to say, I don't know how to update all of them. I understand it costs millions to update them, each one, so I don't know how to do that, and I don't know if you can merge them with something else, so that they're not a separate thing, you know? These are some thoughts.
I think that's for us to figure out. That's why I said that the analysis isn't fully baked, that's why we're not asking for more specific direction at this point, just, it's ongoing work.
And I will mention that, you know, we've talked about this in the past at the board, and we've gone back and chatted about this as well, as to whether or not we could do something sort of that affects all the NPAs beneficially in one fell swoop. And frankly, to date, we really haven't found a way to do that. You know, we might be able to batch, like Todd's alluding to, and that's something we're going to have to, you know, learn more about as we go, but just trying to tackle it from a global standpoint, we really just haven't found a way, because they were all adopted separately, they're all very distinct, again, some of them point to base zoning, some of them create their very own tailored zoning just for that area. So we're sort of all over the map.
Supervisor Frost?
Just want to add that about four, five, or six years ago, Economic Development did a major project of creating a brochure for each of, each of the communities to help them, I guess, to promote our county, and this is what people are like in this community. to promote our county, and this is what people are like in this community, and to give a sense of identity to those different areas of the county. I think, I guess, I'm assuming we want to be sensitive to that as well.
Absolutely.
Because that was a public process, that the people were involved in. That's why I'm saying that.
Right. And I have heard time and time again here, you know, a push for quality, right? So, you know, rest assured, from at least my perspective, quality is incredibly important. Nothing here, to me, should be affecting in a negative fashion the quality of product that we're getting. In fact, you know, I'd like to make it easier to build things, and then push for even higher quality than we're getting today, because it's so much easier and hopefully cheaper and faster to build. So, you know, I live here, I'm raising my kids here, I'm here for the long haul, I know most, if not all of us are. So, quality of the development that happens is incredibly important to staff. And I know it's incredibly important to you as well.
Supervisor Hume.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Sorry, I just want to go on record that I was wrong. We do have SPAs in District Five down in the Delta. Very important SPAs. That create other headaches.
Okay, I'll just pile on one more time and agree wholeheartedly with what Dave said, and it's funny, earlier in my notes I had, you don't have to sacrifice quality to, when you're improving the process. You've all heard me say it a million times, when you lower the price of building, you often get a higher quality product, because the developer can afford to do it. So, it's not a question of one or the other.
All right, Todd.
All right. Now, a little bit tougher subject here, hearing body authority. And so, what we're talking about here is, obviously, within legal bounds, reducing the level of hearing bodies, where we can do that. And so, a couple of caveats here. We obviously have to comply with the Subdivision Map Act, the Brown Act, and things like that. But I want to identify a couple of policy considerations here. And this graphic is one of those where we're looking at all of the master plan areas. Some of these are approved master plans or specific plans, some are pending. At some point, the board has made or will make a policy decision on each one of these. What I mean by that is you have, or the board in the past, or current board, has approved a number of these projects, and their respective land use plans, and in some cases, zoning. So, we've got a land use plan that shows the configuration of land uses within each one of those, the densities, the intermix, the connectivity. All of those things are considered in a master plan or specific plan. So, the board's already made that policy decision. We also have subdivisions outside of these master plan areas, infill areas, you know, your Carmichael, your Fair Oaks, and things of those geographies, where subdivisions that are consistent with general plan land use designations and zoning. So, at some point, the board has said, this is the land use we want, this is the density we want, through a public process. The question here is, do we, as the county, does the board want to delegate the hearing body authority down to, for example, subdivision review committee, as opposed to the planning commission for these maps? And this would take zoning code amendments and county code amendments. And so, one more thing to add before I go to the next slide. As an example, SEQA already provides an exemption, very specific, for residential projects that are consistent with a specific plan. So, we've got an exemption in state law for the environmental process. Is there a way to streamline the other side of that process? And so, the question that we have here is really twofold. The first, and admittedly, this is a bit of a head-scratcher that I'm even asking this question, but, does the board want, by right, ministerial multifamily housing in all zone districts where it is permitted? If it's consistent with development standards, and that's not just on those sites that are on the vacant land inventory, which we have to do anyway, this is all the other sites where multifamily zoning is already in place, or other zoning that allows multifamily. Again, you've already dedicated the time and resources to identifying and adopting the zoning for these parcels. Do you want to make it by right? That's the first question.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So, I just have a kind of an overarching, general perspective to share, relative to kind of your introductory remarks on this slide, Todd. And as it relates to, I think what I heard you say is, you know, one of the considerations we might want to consider here is taking what would otherwise come before the board for the application of our discretion, to go and function in a ministerial context for an advisory body, subdivision review committee, or even planning commission. I think there's kind of a litmus test here, that I think applies to all of us up here. I don't want to speak for everyone, but I'm just thinking out loud here, that if there is likely to be any part of the exercise of discretion by a lower, not a lower, but an advisory body, that is, the outcome of which is likely to be so controversial that we're going to hear about it later, I think that's kind of the question that, I'll turn it back to staff, that staff has to ask yourself, because then, it's really a question of good governance, for me, is, is there any kind of direct accountability left with those advisory bodies? I feel comfortable if it's designed correctly, or if it's designed in a way, I should say, that maybe gives some kind of a pressure relief valve, in terms of appealability somehow, if the exercise of that discretion comes with a lot of consternation, and enough consternation that upsets a constituency, that causes them to show up here, basically, and say, what the heck is your planning commission doing? What the heck is your subdivision review commission or committee doing? So, I think that's kind of the lens that I would ask staff to consider, is, are there opportunities where it's likely that that won't necessarily be the case most of the time, and therefore, you wouldn't have to ask yourself the accountability question most of the time? So, that's kind of my general perspective on it.
Supervisor Frost.
I like the idea of by right, just, there are a lot of subdivisions that just make sense, and you wish it was by right, so that you didn't have to jump through so many levels of hoops. But not all of them are going to be that way. And so, when it is something that goes to the subdivision, if you, you know, have the subdivision review committee, you know, be that entity that's going to review projects, and you merge the CPACs into that, and their voice goes to the subdivision review committee to be heard by the supervisors, the question I have is, will they feel like their voice was taken away? Or will there be, you know, will there be some kind of an opportunity to have a community vote on a project in a community? The other thing is, because there's two things. Are we taking away their voice, and are we making them drive 45 minutes to get to a place at night, so they can have a voice? We have CPACs in the communities, and when we had COVID, everyone was so mad, just because they had to be on the Zoom, they didn't feel like their voice was heard the same. So, those are two, you know, if, as you're, I don't know, I think you're going to go and think about what you can do if you were going to eliminate the CPAC. Can you eliminate it without eliminating their voice? And can you eliminate it with a geographical, sensitivity to geographic barriers to having that voice?
I just want to respond briefly to clarify what I think I hear you saying. What we're talking about here is this recommendation number three, which is moving public input for these maps that we're talking about, from the CPACs to the subdivision review committee. We're not actually recommending eliminating the CPACs entirely. Just, I want to make that clear.
Okay. Because I think eliminating the CPACs is, that's a major.
A substantial amount of outreach, and we would be having a much different conversation.
Yeah, that's major. Okay, well, that's good.
Yeah.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think for both of these questions, my sort of litmus test is, and this kind of goes to the comments that have already been made, is, was there a process previously wherein standards were established, use provisions were identified, and it can be reasonably expected that this will develop in the manner in which it was proposed? And so, obviously, if that's the case, if there's that sort of overarching master approval that has been done previously, and now this is just implementation, I think that's the perfect sweet spot, where it can go down to a ministerial approval. You know, it's those one-offs that weren't contemplated, or that are a rezone, or, you know, a shift from what had been previously contemplated. Those are the ones where I think there should be more scrutiny. And I'm not sure yet how I feel about the CPACs versus the subdivision review committee. For some of these, simply because there are little peccadilloes that are neighborhood-specific, that the CPACs know about, that, you know, the neighborhood's going to come out and talk about, that might inform the ZA, or whomever is making the ultimate decision. On a map extension, that ought to be a stamp right out there on the counter, as far as I'm concerned, for as much as it allows. Boom, boom, boom. Keep going.
One clarification on this, you mentioned rezones. What we're talking about here is subdivision maps that are consistent with the approved or adopted specific plan and zoning. We're not talking about a rezone going down to the SRC. A rezone would need to come back before the legislative body, the board.
Fully understood. Just making the distinction in the threshold, that, you know, here is something that had previously been discussed in an open meeting, everybody bought into it and said, this is what we're going to do, versus something that is saying, eh, that's not going to work out, we need to be able to do something different.
Understood.
Supervisor Desmond.
Let's chime in. I am certainly sensitive to the concerns, I think, articulated by Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Hume. I mean, it's concerning to me to, I guess, disenfranchise our local communities completely. And I know you're not suggesting that. I'm actually a little more comfortable with number two, with, I think, some of the context that you just provided, Todd, certainly. With number one, I am all in favor of by right ministerial for multifamily in the vast majority of places. I do get a little more concerned that, when we get into some of these communities, say, in collector roads, areas like that, if it's along a commercial corridor, I mean, 100%. So, I'd have to maybe see what you come back with. And it also depends on, I guess, the development standards that we put in place as well. So, I don't know if that's helpful.
All right. I'll just make this real quick. I agree with all the recommendations. Next.
This is one of those opportunities for public comment.
Okay. Do we have public comment on this specific area? Don't feel compelled. All right.
All right. You're almost done with me. This is just kind of a wrap-up slide, to generally talk about some of these regulatory incentives that we already have. So, we briefly mentioned the Development Program Managers program that has been established. That's already, we've got a long list of projects where folks are herding the cats, so to speak. We already have a zoning code density bonus provision that allows a number of deviations for affordable projects, deviations from development standards. Examples are there on the slide. This third bullet, I don't know what else to call it, but a scalable product review that could be applicable to multiple sites. And generally, what I'm talking about here is, we have regular customers. They come and build, say, a multifamily project. It goes through our designer view program. If they want to move that product around the county, why should we make them go through that same hoop again? If we've already signed off on the similar product, architecture, the style, et cetera, obviously, there's going to be some site-specific circumstances, utilities and configuration, that's a given. But I don't see the benefit of going through the entire process, just figuring out what the site-specific issues are. So, if we can scale, and it doesn't have to be just multifamily, it could be, you know, one of our single-family home builders, that's the idea behind this scalable product review. And then, the last bullet on this slide is something that I think was called out in the draft infill program. These walkthrough guides are the product of, or at least the brainchild of recognition of the differences in regulations in certain SPAs, obviously, notwithstanding the conversation we just had. It would be a guide for development, folks, in certain corridors or certain zoning districts. Here's what you need to look for, here's what the applicable development standards are. This may or may not be needed if we're going to a different approach, but it's just an idea that we're kicking around. There's no ask on this slide, these are just ideas.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Just real quick, relative to the scalable product review, I don't disagree with you, Todd, that in those instances where you have an applicant that we're familiar with, and they're bringing similar product to bear in different parts of the county, different project areas, the only thing I want to make sure you're not suggesting, and that we wouldn't codify, is simply, you know, institutionalizing, I mean, the epitome of cookie cutter development. So, yeah, maybe the floor plans are similar, but maybe the elevation articulation is different, maybe the color palettes are different, maybe the material palettes are different, maybe the landscape palettes are different.
Context matters.
Absolutely. So, you know, I think there's something to be said for maybe going to a Lennar community in the town that looks and feels differently than one that is out in Vineyard. And, you know, perhaps it's, you know, from the applicant's perspective, that's a very easy way to do what they do. But I just don't want to just plug and play, whole, you know, wholeheartedly, plug and play, you know, the exact same type of development across the county. I think that would be a mistake.
Understood.
All right.
All right. So, now, I'm just going to transition where we're going to get into, this is really about the Affordable Housing Implementation Strategy, harkening back to the SHRA Affordable Housing Plan. And what that called for was 2,000 units, affordable units, over five years. So, that's 400 a year. I can pick up on that math, other than the 151 to 149 earlier. And so, this is, how are we identifying the opportunity sites, the associated infrastructure needs? We're obviously utilizing our vacant land inventory. We need to figure out the funding sources, whether that's our Affordable Housing Fund, where we have residential projects, market rate paying into this fund, the Housing Trust Fund, similar approach for non-residential. We have applied for the Pro Housing Incentive Program grant funds in the second round. We're looking for other ideas. And really, what this comes down to is us, the county and SHRA, working together to implement this program. And this is just a who's who, who's doing what. So, planning and environmental review, if there are entitlements needed, we go through that. Design review, CEPAC compliance. Our county engineering folks, they administer the impact fee programs, and the administration of site improvement plan reviews. Our building inspection, building permits and inspection folks do the building construction inspections, CMID, construction management inspection, they do the site improvements. And then, SHRA is obviously involved in the administration of our housing funds per both of those ordinances, the Housing Trust Fund ordinance and the Affordable Housing ordinance. And they get involved with, obviously, much more than is on the slide here, but they, at a minimum, do the ongoing monitoring of de-restricted affordable housing, plus a whole host of other things that wouldn't fit on the slide. And so, I'm going to transition over to Claudia here, generally, to talk about some of the funding incentives that we're thinking about.
Good afternoon, Chairman Kennedy, members of the board, thank you. Claudia Wade, County Engineer, and we're here to talk about the potential options for the county to assist with the funding challenges that we have with affordable housing. For your consideration, we're looking at, we'll be discussing impact fees, the county impact fees, and the external agency impact fees, and non-county impact fees and the external agency impact fees, and non-county controlled. Affordable, we'll be providing an affordable housing case study to give you an idea of what the costs are. We'll be looking at some impact fee offset options and other mechanisms for your consideration. So, to the left are a listing of county-controlled impact fees, includes specific plan impact fees, the county roadway CIP, this SETFV program, water impact fees, drainage impact fees. And to the right are the various other impact fees that we collect, they're outside of county control. And just to give you a general idea, on average, the total impact fees, the county component is only 25% of all the fees that we collect. So, just to give you an example, we looked at Botano Affordable Housing Project, was developed about 10 years ago, which was 148 units. We looked at that project, put it to today's traffic, today's impact fees, and put it across four different areas of the county. And with that, the average county impact fees was $4,300 per unit, which equated about $635,000. That's only the county impact fee component. And look at, looking at all the impact fees, we're looking at $18,000 per residential unit in today's dollars, which, again, equates to the county impact fees, equate to about 24% of all the fees that we collect. Impact fees only. So, we're providing two options if the county would like to consider an offset. Option A is a specified dollar value. An example, City of Sacramento appropriates about $3 million per year. Once that money runs out, it's a first-come, first-served, $3 million is the cap. At this time, I don't know how much longer City of Sacramento will be continuing that program, considering their status of the general fund, but currently is the program they have. The second option is looking at housing targets, 100 units per year, which is approximate average annual in the last seven years for our county. Or look at a target of 400 units per year, consistent with the SHRA Affordable Housing Plan. So, can I, let's see. Back up. So, as an example, if you're looking at an annual amount, specific dollar amount, $3 million per year, for example, looking at the Botano study, if you were to cover just the county component, that would be $635,000, leaving the remainder for other programs that come into play. Or if you're looking at covering all the other impact fees, that amounts to about $2.6 million in that year, leaving only about $400,000 for any other project.
For this slide, that's for one project, though, correct?
That is right. We're using the Botano study in this case. If that were to come in today, and we had, the board decides, well, we will allot $3 million for that year. If we're only going to cover the county impact fees, it's 635, it would be $635,000, leaving room for other projects.
Right.
Versus if we were to cover all the impact fees for the project, you're only leaving yourself $400,000.
Got it.
So, looking at option B, using unit targets, housing unit targets instead of a dollar amount, so 100 units per year, you're looking at, using, again, this is using the Botano project as an example, you would cover $429,000. All impact fees would be $1.8 million. If you opt for 400 units, the county impact fees would be $1.7 million for that project, all impact fees would be $7.1 million.
While you're paused, Supervisor Serna.
When she's done with this slide.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, was there a question?
Nope.
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay. So, given the background, the information that we just provided, we have a list of questions. And the most important question is, does the board want to fund a fee offset program for affordable housing? If the answer is yes, then it's, does the county want to proceed with county impact fees only or all impact fees? And what source would this offset be funded through? General fund or the Affordable Housing Fund, Housing Trust Fund that Todd spoke to earlier? Currently, there's a balance of a little over $1 million. At this point, we collect those fees, and the monies go to SHRA to then use those funds towards affordable housing. I believe SHRA is here. If there's any questions on that, they're available to answer questions on that. With that, should, what, if we were to pursue this program, would there be a sunset period, annual, three-year, five-year, 10-year? Staff would recommend the county, the county impact fees, for the reason you just saw on the previous slide. And also, somewhere in the middle ground, maybe a three-year period, because that gives opportunity for a project to come in, the life cycle of a project, an annual would be too difficult as a target, but perhaps a three- or five-year? What is the appropriate level of funding on an annual basis? Do we want to specify a dollar amount, or do we want to do a target, 100 unit, 400 unit, or any other specified target? And does the board want to consider a fee offset program for market rate housing? That would be the moderate and above-moderate income levels. We're here for any questions and public comment.
Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you. So, I've had some really good conversations with our community development team in recent days and weeks about this, and that, and by this, I mean a potential offset program. And I think it's very, very worthwhile to pursue. Hopeful my colleagues feel the same way. And I also feel strongly that not only should we take it upon ourselves to at least engage a pilot program to see how a, an offset, a fee offset program could work, we should very intensely work with our sister agencies, local park districts, and others that have fee authority, to at least investigate how they could likewise help us incent more affordable housing production by way of another offset program administered by those agencies. What I would like to suggest, and I know that the second question, or the first question is also asking the question about where should the funding come from, I'm not, I wouldn't be too thrilled with general fund necessarily. I think the Affordable Housing Fund, Housing Trust Fund is an appropriate place to look to fund a pilot program, which goes to the last part of the slide, which is the recommendation. And what I would like to suggest is that we consider at least a three-year pilot. And the $5 million that was, has been held in reserve as a potential Williamson Act-like tax incentive program that we had tasked SHRA to kind of explore, again, for the same purpose here, which is to incent affordable housing, or trying to keep folks from, you know, becoming homeless, in fact, that we tap into that. Quite frankly, the Williamson Act idea is much more complicated than I freely admit I thought was going to be the case. But that's five million there. I think if we pursued a 50-50 split between that source and a combination of affordable housing fund and trust fund dollars for a total of $10 million for three years, I think that would help us understand how that might really make a difference. And whether or not we kind of look to a target of units or not, I, you know, I kind of leave it to smarter people than myself to help us figure that out. But that's what I would suggest. And I will just say, too, that, you know, I've had discussions with Supervisor Kennedy about some of the use of these funds as it relates to potential other use that would be very specific to a specific project. And in my discussions with our staff, they have kind of advised me that that's a laudable application of funds to perhaps provide an incentive on that specific affordable housing project, but we feel like we could find funds to get to what that particular developer is asking for in terms of incenting that project by other means. And so, I did explain to the staff that there may be some sensitivity to that, since we've been talking about the use of those funds for other things, but I think this is teed up beautifully for the use of the $5 million that's at least been sitting there for now, for a couple, well, 18 months, I guess. So that's what I would propose. And in the course of my colleagues answering the questions for themselves, as they appear in the queue right now, I respectfully ask maybe to have, you know, give us all a response to whether you think that's a good idea or a bad idea, or needs to be adjusted. But that's what I'd like to propose.
May I just ask one clarifying question, so I can consider? Are you suggesting that that money be used for county-only impact fees or for all impact fees?
It would only be for county.
Okay.
Supervisor Frost.
I have a couple of questions. I'm open to what Supervisor Serna is saying, but my question is, I would be curious to know if SHRA can share how this impacts their existing portfolio or projects. And then I would also want to ask if you could elaborate just a little bit on what you mean by, does the board want to consider offset, a fee offset for market rate, and what would that look like?
Maybe I can touch on that really quickly. When, I believe it was Supervisor Serna brought this concept up this past summer, there was a brief discussion at the board, and I believe it was Supervisor Hume, if I recall correctly, that said, "Hey, we should also maybe explore this for multifamily as well." So, we just bring that up because it was a discussion in the past. Obviously, the more you open it up to, the more diluted the dollars get, but obviously, then the benefit is spread a bit wider. So that was one of the policy questions that we wanted to bring forward. You know, our tentative recommendation is to focus really on affordable housing, but I do believe the City of Sacramento also offsets impact fees for sort of that missing middle as well, so that is an option.
Right. They go to the missing middle, and they clarify that, they say they use it for the, to, for workforce housing, is why they justify it. To give you an example, for affordable housing, as I mentioned, we're looking at $4,300 per unit for market rate, we're looking at, and that's for county impact fees only, market rate, we're looking at, on average, using, again, I just use the Botano project, we're looking at about $12,000 per unit.
And if I could mention, just to build on that, depending on where the project is, the suite of fees charged can be totally different. So this is one example of one good project we plop down in places, just for frame of reference. But again, you know, depending on what park district you're in, what water district you're in, you know, it can mean, you know, fairly big swings. So, you know, don't take those as verbatim, but it's just by way of example.
That was an average, and there's, an average of our five areas, but you're right. You can have a different parks district, different school, water, they can, it just, it does vary.
Specific land fees or not.
I'm interested in looking at what we could do for the missing middle also, or including them, but I still want to hear from SHRA, because I wonder if that impacts the projects that you're working on.
Good afternoon, Christine Wicker from SHRA. So, I think you probably know this, but the Affordable Housing Ordinance and the Housing Trust Fund ordinance here at the county are generated by building permits being pulled, and we get a fee for that. So we can't be guaranteed every year how much the county is going to remit to SHRA. It can, it can be anywhere from, you know, $2 million to $4 million is probably the average between those two funds. But we do use those funds, as we were here before you yesterday, to put them in projects like the Tarasina Wildhawk project is a good example, this is just yesterday. And we give those as a loan to the project, and those could pay for a variety of things, but including all the fees already now. So, when you approved the gap financing loan yesterday, those will be used to pay all the county fees and the other entity fees already. So, if we were to, so there wouldn't be a lot of savings from that perspective, because you were already paying those fees with these ordinances. Does that make sense?
Yeah, essentially, we're using county money anyway.
Right.
And it just doesn't go to you to give the loan, which will be paid back on sale, on the sale, right?
We do loan it, so it does come back. It can take years to come back to us, but it does come back as a loan. I guess with this structure, it would really limit the amount of funds we could loan to a project, because most of them would be going to pay the fees. And, again, it wouldn't come, it would be a grant, we'd just, you know, be paying for them. But that is what the funds are currently being used for.
So I guess I'm ignorant on the amount of funds that go into the Affordable Housing Fund, Housing Trust Fund, and if they're just getting a portion of what the county has, and we have more in that big bucket, I want to...
Yeah, I think the last couple of years, we've collected around $5 million annually, if I recall, looking at that table correctly, and we've remit all of those dollars to SHRA on a quarterly basis. Again, did I get that wrong there?
Yeah, I was saying, up to $4 million, but on a good year, it could be five.
So we're basically talking about reallocating the money if we go with Affordable Housing Fund, using that bucket of money, basically. We're reallocating the money from SHRA to, or are we working it through SHRA still? And so it's the same, I'm a little confused, I'm sorry.
And some of those details we'd have to work out, you know, given whatever policy direction we get today, we'll obviously go back and, you know, put the widget together to make it happen. So we haven't worked out all the details yet.
I will add just one other thing, that, as you also, I'm sure, know, funding for affordable housing is extremely competitive at the state level and for federal tax credits. So the funding that you approve upfront, the gap financing that we use these funds for currently, that helps us be competitive for these other programs. I'm sure we could work it away that shows it's still a contribution for the fees, but just keep that in mind as you see these big dollar amounts when we come forward for gap financing for you. It helps us to be successful.
Okay. And then just finally, I just want to say, if I had all the money in the world, I wish I could help market rate, too.
Supervisor Desmond.
Christine, before you go, thanks. I appreciate that last point you made, because, yeah, you're right. If we dedicate all the money from the Housing Trust Fund to just offset impact fees, it may really hurt us in bringing some other projects, getting them over the finish line. But I just want to confirm for those fees, affordable housing fees that are generated in unincorporated county, those are only, only go towards projects in unincorporated Sacramento County, right? They're not intermingled with funds from the city? Okay.
No, they're kept completely separate. I mean, you know what we really need is what the city does, which is they, we have very similar ordinances, those funds come to SHRA, too, and then we provide gap financing, plus they have the $3 million that they use for the fee offset. So, it'd be great to have, continue with the gap financing, but help with the fees, that's for sure.
They also have a $66 million deficit.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah. They are thinking about, they're applying for pro-housing funds, the city is. I can't remember what they're, and I know the county is as well, but I know the city's really going to earmark whatever pro-housing funds they get from the state to fill behind what was general fund to pay for these fees. Yeah.
We have the pro-housing designation as well, I believe, in the county, so presumably we're also applying for those funds. Thank you, Christine. Well, I'm, I support Supervisor Serna's suggestion, I think it's a good one. I agree, I don't think we should offset the funds from, impact fees from other special districts, but I think we can be doing a lot more to try to coordinate with them and get them to do more to incentivize affordable housing. And I also, I would like to see some ideas about maybe a scaled-down offset for county fees for missing middle, when you come back with this, if that's, that's all right. Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to start with something that I think is negligible net cost, that could still be considered a pretty valuable incentive relative to impact fees, and that is shifting the trigger for their payment from approval to occupancy. And that keeps the cash flow with the project, it's something that we're still going to get the money eventually, and we're not experiencing the impact until the people move in anyway. So I think that's something we definitely want to put on the table. I agree with all of the suggestions from Supervisor Serna, and I particularly like the idea of throwing the $5 million in restricted reserves into the kitty for this program. I would, just in doing quick math, if we went with, say, an 800-unit-per-year target, that would use up those funds in that three-year window. So that's what I'd like to do, is really set out a pretty tangible goal. set out a pretty tangible goal. The one thing that I would want to add, you know, as we look at how to sweeten the pot for missing middle or market rate or whatever, is again, taking the idea that it's not a one-size-fits-all, that all multifamily is the same. And so while I don't necessarily think we need to be subsidizing a greenfield, traditional, you know, market-rate apartment project, if there are other aspects to it that meet other goals of the county, reuse of an aging commercial corridor, vertical mixed-use project, whatever it is, that's something that's outside the box, or maybe, you know, a little bit more difficult of a project to deliver, then that it may qualify for some of these funds. And then I think we should absolutely be working with our partners in the other districts, special districts, to look at their fees, and at the very minimum to encourage them to do the same thing and move the trigger from, from approval to occupancy. And I believe those are all the questions.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I appreciate the discussion and the feedback from everyone as to the idea about how to fund this pilot effort. And I think I heard everyone thus far mentioned some interest in missing middle. I know that should we be unanimous in giving this direction to go off and figure out the details, Dave, maybe one of the scenarios or options you could bring back to us is what if we made this applicable somehow to below-market rate in somewhat reflecting arena need from income targets 80% to 50%, or 80% to 30%? That way, you know, maybe it's not, well, I don't, I'm not entirely sure what missing middle means in terms of percentage, but I think we're all familiar that a moderate income is, I believe, 80 to 120. Is that right? So maybe taking a segment of the moderate and then looking at low and very low might be one, one way to kind of explore how the offset program could be administered. Just an idea.
I agree with what's been said.
Did you want to take public comment on this section?
Yes. Do we have public comment? Mr. Norm.
Kind of figured as much.
I'll make it quick. This has been a long afternoon. But let me just say, you know, I want to applaud you guys, first of all, just for doing this process and looking at this. And this is a great proposal idea, too. We have, actually have affordable builders in the BIA, and they have used these programs as offsets in the city, and report to me that this is an incredibly effective way to get to the, you know, the finish line of getting your capital stack figured out. It's very complicated, as you guys know, with credits and loans and all sorts of different complicated things. And I just want to say that, you know, I know you're talking about some big numbers, you know, it's $10 million. But let's not only look at the cost, but the benefit. I mean, we're trying to get hundreds of units of housing that are desperately needed in, in terms of what the county could do on a very small number of amount of money compared to your overall budget to affect an amazing amount of housing. This is something that's totally worthwhile. We support Supervisor Serna, the Serna-Hume plan, I suppose, at this point. So thank you very much for considering this, and please follow through and take it seriously. This is something that can really be very, very helpful to a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for being here. Any other member of the public like to address the board at this time?
I just have one more slide. So with that, the first question, I think, was already answered. Does the board want to work with external agency partners to defer their impact fees? So we'll just look for board direction to ask us to reach out to our agency partners to see if they want to defer, to defer the fees to occupancy or another trigger. The second question is, and I'll refer this to Dave, but we heard it earlier from one of our members of the public, is do we want to consider the potential for tax increment loans?
Yeah. So before I jump to that, you know, fee deferrals, we already offer the ability to defer some county fees to occupancy, but not all county fees. So we're currently exploring, you know, the possibility of deferring all county fees, and then also going out to our partners and asking for the same. Frankly, there's really, there should not be any impact from doing so. We still collect the fees. We still collect the fees before the impact hits, right, the person moving into the home, et cetera. But it does help developers with cash flow tremendously. And that is, if there is any risk to the county, it is a cash flow issue. But typically, the time between building permit and a unit being constructed is a matter of months. So it really shouldn't lead to much impact from our perspective. So that is a great thing that we'll be exploring. As to the tax increment loan, we're calling it a tax increment loan. I'm not sure if that's accurate or not, frankly, because we're not sure if anybody's done this before. So I guess we can call it whatever we want. The concept here, and there's a specific project in mind in the, in the city of SAC, whereby it's either a vacant or underutilized parcel of land right now, and there's a proposed project. We would freeze the current tax base, which is based on the underutilized, you know, status of it. And then when the project comes in, that tax increment grows, obviously, with the value of the project. We would, on an annual basis, loan out that tax increment to the developer, and at some specified time in the future, it would be paid back. And what's been proposed is sort of this rolling loan, for lack of a better word. Year one, whatever that increment is, it gets loaned out. And then year X, 10, 20, 30 years later, whatever it is, it gets paid back to the county. Year two, we loan the tax increment out, it gets paid back again on that specified timetable. Now, whether or not that could be securitized by the developer, so they could, you know, realize that benefit upfront, would have to be explored by them. There would be an interest rate attached to it. So we would be getting our money back in full with interest over time. There's an argument to be made that, you know, but for this program, we wouldn't see the project, so we wouldn't see that increment coming our way anyway. So I think that's from, you know, I don't believe that Nick's here anymore, so I'm trying to share what I think he'd be telling you if he was. So, you know, that's the concept that's been floated to us. Frankly, the developer nor have staff found examples from other cities or counties around us that have done the same. So this is pretty innovative. So if the board is interested in exploring this further, I think we would be both working with the developer that's proposed this, as well as looking at this from a policy perspective. And my recommendation would be we bring back both of those things at the same time, or the policy first and then the specific proposal next. Because I do believe that if we are to entertain this, there's great value to the development community in doing so, and there probably will be more interest in the future. And, you know, one thing I want to protect against is that, you know, the county's not a bank, right? But there can be great benefit from these types of programs. So it's a really unique concept. Again, haven't seen it happen before, and wanted to test the waters with the board as to something that's, if you're amenable to exploring further, and if so, our recommendation would be we would come back both with details on the proposed project itself and an accompanying policy that would guide any future proposals along the same lines. Does that make sense? Any questions?
Makes great sense. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. So first of all, yes to the first question. But in my last point, I'm not looking to expand the amount of deferrals. I would literally like to have us move the payment due point, and so that it's not something that's done on a project-by-project basis. It's just, this is when we shall collect. And I think we should work with our agency partners to do that. But I think we should also work with them to take a hard look at the fees that they're charging. And so one of the things that was brought up in a focus group was if, whether or not park districts might be willing to take active trails and count them towards Quimby credits, and reduce their fees that way. So it's building healthier neighborhoods, but it's not, it's not putting that on the back of the project and still charging extra fees for the, for the parks. Same thing if we're looking at reuse areas within commercial corridors. If a connection fee has been paid, and the infrastructure in the street is not being upsized, maybe we should look at a reduced or a forgiven fee there. And I know we do that to some extent, but make sure that that program is as lean as and mean as it can possibly be. With respect to the tax increment loans, I've been a part of those in another agency, particularly with sales tax. But I know the county has also done that with every city that is incorporated, where it's this sliding scale that keeps peeling down every five years. And, and again, towards sales tax, I think that could also be expanded to property tax. But the big thing is exactly what you were just talking about, Dave, is that you set the threshold, the baseline. And so what you're doing is you're banking against future revenue, future money, money that you're not getting right now. And so it's a win-win, really. You're getting a project that you want to see happen. You're making it easier and more palatable. You're banking against that future dollar, so you're not robbing Peter to pay Paul to do it. And in the case of one project, it paid itself back ahead of schedule because it was so successful. So I think it can be structured to where it's a very little, you know, impact to the bottom line. And then I want to throw out something that's probably too complicated to get into right now during what's dragging on to be a fairly long workshop. But it's something that was brought up, and that is the idea of zoning yields. And is there flexibility within projects that can come forward? And so in other words, if we have arena site that's identified at an RD 20 and RD 30 level, and it's so many acres, and we do the calculations, and that's how many units that site is supposed to produce to meet our arena numbers, if the project can meet those numbers with a smaller footprint and still retain some of the acreage of that site to do something that's maybe more market rate-based, or a single-family in nature, or even, you know, townhomes or triplexes or whatever, that we are willing to consider that type of flexibility, instead of being so rigid in the fact that I know the whole property is zoned for this, you have, your project has to take up the holes. So it's just another way of making it a little more profitable for the, the project proponent, so that they can do what we want them to do and offset the, you know, so that there's a little bit more money coming in. As I said, that's a fairly complicated proposal to hash out right now, but happy to have that, that discussion. And then infrastructure, financing districts, anything we can do that kind of puts some of the tools that redevelopment used to have on the table, back on the table, I'm completely in favor.
And if I may touch on that one, we teed that up as a potential future topic. Obviously, we have an EIFD out of Metro Air Park, so we're not, you know, we have some experience with that. We are in receipt of a number of proposals for additional EIFDs. We're actually actively working with the city of Sacramento per board direction on Stockton Boulevard, and that should be shaped up for the board's consideration sometime early summer-ish, to whether or not you want to explore that further or implement it. But we have been approached by others as well, other cities, development interests have, you know, expressed general interest in EIFDs. This is one, I think, we need a little bit more time whereby my proposal would be if the board's interested in, you know, exploring further EIFDs, that we would shape up a policy and bring it back to the board. Because at least from staff's perspective, EIFDs can be a very, very powerful tool, but, and make sense in some places, but frankly, make less sense in other places, right? So that's the kind of policy discussion we want to bring back to the board at a later date. So we're not prepared to dive deep into that, but wanted to tee it up for a future discussion.
Supervisor Frost.
On the tax increment loans, is this a bond program, and how does that stack up with skip and bold? And how does it stack up with just collecting the fees at the end of the build or whatever? So is it on top of all of it? I'm trying to wrap my head around that.
Good question. And we're still trying to wrap our heads around it, too. So it wouldn't be a bond program. Whether or not the developer could ultimately bond against that revenue stream on their own remains to be seen. But it wouldn't be the same thing as boulder skip. And I believe, and I would need to explore this further, the developer might be able to still finance their fees, which often happens through boulder skip, but then also use this revenue stream for other purposes. And maybe I should have mentioned this from the get-go, but, you know, the project that they're looking at penciled at one point in time, and then COVID happened, and everything else happened, right, and cost one through the roof. So they're looking at this essentially as gap financing. It's that last portion of funding needed to make the project go. And what's been represented to us is, without this gap financing by way of a tax increment loan, the project just doesn't pencil and isn't going to happen. So that's the argument that's being made to us. We're sort of, as Supervisor Hume alluded to, loaning out monies that wouldn't otherwise be coming to us, except if the project comes online. And the project's not going to come online unless the loan is made. So a little bit of a chicken or egg thing.
Where does the money come from?
It would be essentially property tax revenue that would otherwise be coming to the county. So it's the growth in property tax revenue that results from the new project coming on board. We would be the beneficiary of that property tax revenue and sales tax revenue. And instead of taking that directly into our coffers, we would loan it out and get paid back with interest over time.
And deferring the payment to the end of the project is just another added benefit on top of the tax increment?
If we were to be able to defer fees to occupancy.
Yeah.
We would. But this proposal's within an incorporated city, so they'd be paying the city's fees and not necessarily the county's. But most jurisdictions do have some form of fee deferral program, at least from my experience.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm responding in the affirmative to the first one, in terms of deferral. I really do think the tax increment loan idea is an interesting concept. I know that that's skeletal at this point, and you'd have to figure out all the details. But, but it's intriguing, especially in light of the fact that we haven't really had that kind of mechanism in place for over a decade now. So I do think that one of the benefits of that, if we can make it work, is, as was just mentioned, is that this is one area, kind of a unique area, where we have some, we, the county, have some influence on incenting appropriate development, infill development in particular, not just in the unincorporated county, but all, in all seven cities, because we're the taxing, tax collecting agency. Which brings me to a second concern, which is, I think one of the details that's definitely out to be worked out is, what, what are we saddled with, or what could we be saddled with, in light of the fact that a fraction of every tax dollar comes to the county? The other components go, or parts of that dollar go to school districts and, and other sources. So I assume that we'd still have to make those receipt agencies whole. And so that's going to have some implications for our finances and our budget. So I would expect that when you, and if you come back with this, Dave, that will, that'll be one of the questions that's answered for us. Because I feel a little less comfortable if we didn't have a clear map forward that, that really accounted for the fact that as a responsible taxing agency, we also are, you know, tasked with distribution of those tax dollars.
And if I may, really quickly, I think I can answer that now. The proposal is to loan out just the county's portion of the general fund money. So much like with EIFDs, we were dedicating our portion of the revenue. We're not touching the revenue that goes to schools and other taxing entities, and the same would be here.
I also think that ultimately, if we get past kind of this particular opportunity with this one project, and let's say maybe there's a subsequent pilot or something, we would probably want to think about roping it off. So how much potential immediate tax forgiveness will we, would we want to encumber ourselves with in any given set of years, so that we don't kind of artificially constrain ourselves, especially in a tough budget year, with not acquiring 100% of the tax dollars that would otherwise come in that year to the county? So those are some thoughts. Thanks.
Okay. Claudia, you have more?
So we are ready to wrap up the presentation. I'll turn it back over to Todd.
Great. Thank you.
And maybe I can jump in as well. You know, obviously, well, I think this is your slide, so go for it. But just wanted to offer, you know, if there's any other ideas, obviously, we threw a lot of questions on the table today. I really appreciate your engagement and your patience, you know, three hours in, not an easy deal. So really appreciate that. If there's other ideas as we move forward for zoning code amendments or other novel programs, we're all ears. So please feel free to communicate those to us. And with that, Todd, next steps?
Yeah. So it's pretty straightforward. We're obviously going to compile the direction we've received today into a resolution of intention. That will outline the feedback we've heard today, as well as any public comments that the board picked up on and provided direction to us on, just so we can set kind of the guardrails on where we're going from here. Our intent is to bring that back to the board in relatively short order, so then we can proceed with actually implementing this direction. And those would include county code amendments, zoning code amendments, and then obviously all the other direction that we heard relative to the financing mechanisms. And that is it.
And you will be following up with individual board members in the very likely case that you need some clarification on some of the things we've said today?
Absolutely.
Great.
That generally goes without saying, but it's a good thing to point out.
Okay, great.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to item number three, or first of all, I believe, I'm not sure if we still have a member of the public here, but someone came right after public comment, not on the agenda, so wanted to give that person an opportunity.
We have two people that have signed up. I don't know if they're here, Sean White and Brenda White. It doesn't look like they're here.
Doesn't look like they're here. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, item number three then, county executive comments.
Thank you, Board. I just want to say thank you to the board for taking time out today, threw a lot of different questions at you, appreciate all your feedback, the challenging of some of the things we've done in the past. I know Dave has worked really hard with his team and pulling this forward, and your input is invaluable, so thank you about that. But I do want to call out and say thank you to Mr. Devante and Mr. Smith and Ms. Wade and Mr. Givens about their work. They've been working incredibly hard on this. You've asked them to go out there and really change the way we're doing it, doing our development process, and they've taken that seriously, and they've worked very, very hard to get this to you. And this workshop is the next step to this, and we have much more work to do, but I think we're really moving the needle with this. So thank you for your input.
Thank you. Any members of the board? Okay, I have an adjournment, if you'll allow me to. Lynn Tiron passed peacefully on March 26, 2024, after a brief illness. Born in San Francisco in 1945, she moved to Sacramento as a child and called the River City home for the rest of her life. Lynn graduated from McClatchy High School before attending SAC State, where she received her bachelor's degree in social work. She returned to CSUS later in life and earned her teacher, teaching credential. A beloved teacher for more than 30 years, Lynn built lifelong friendships with her treasured colleagues at Hollywood Park Elementary School and touched the lives of countless students. Both her children would attend Hollywood Park Elementary. Lynn is preceded in death by her father Earl, mother Marjorie, sister Gail, brothers Russ and Rick. She's also at last reunited with Fred, her husband of 50 years, who passed away in 2019 and is undoubtedly overjoyed to cook again for her. And if I might editorialize, also have someone to talk to endlessly. She has survived in abundant love by her two children, Cindy and Greg, extended family and numerous friends. Per her wishes, no services will be held. A celebration of her life will take place later this year. Thank you. I'm going to adjourn.